All right, good evening, everyone. This meeting, the Tuesday, May 24th, 2022, regular meeting of the Funtz and Borough Planning Board, is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Both adequate and electronic notice of this meeting has been provided by way of publication in the Hunter County Democratic Puria newspaper on about March 17th, 2022. In addition, notice of the meeting was posted at the door of the Borough Funtz and Municipal Building located at 30 E Farm Avenue, and any handicap accessible entrances there, too. Posted on the municipal website, provided by the municipal clerk, and distributed to all persons of any request and copies of same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and may be rebroadcast. This meeting is judicial proceeding, and any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Let's get everyone pleased to rise as you are able to reflect.
Pledge allegiance to the might of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Driver?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Champion is excused. Mr. Dashna?
Here.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Budney?
Here.
Ms. Given is excused. Ms. Whitesman?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Levitt?
Here.
Ms. Kaczynski?
Here.
Mr. Clerico?
Present.
Ms. McManus?
Here.
Mr. Trautman is excused, and we have his partner.
Yes, who is, oh, you know what? Let me promote John Ray to that.
John Ray.
Sorry, I forgot to do that before, John. Well, John is, John is.
Present remotely, yes.
Remotely.
I am here.
Thank you, John. All right. Before we begin the items on the agenda this evening, Cara, could you please go through our conflicts policy?
Yes, so if everyone take a look at the agenda tonight, and please consider whether you have any direct or indirect, personal or pecuniary interest in any matter that is on this agenda tonight, or if you feel that you cannot participate in any matter on this agenda for any reason in an unbiased manner.
I will, I will say for the record that my significant other works for Family Promise of Hunter County, and so I have a conflict of interest by item six on the agenda.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm conflicted out of item number six. I'm a member of the Episcopalian Church.
And I am a, I, my property borders the Episcopalian Church by about 10 feet.
Yep, same with me. I'm 195 feet away, at last glance.
And also, just for the record, Councilman Parker, you won't be participating in an house that involves students. So while you don't have a conflict per se, give a conflict a quiet little slot.
Okay. Anybody else? Welcome to planning in small town New Jersey. All right, thank you. Item one on the agenda, as always, is a period for public comments. I do see we have a couple of folks participating remotely, and we have folks as members of the audience. If anyone would like to say anything on an item that's not on the agenda for a discussion later, please raise your hand or click on Raise Hand on Zoom. Okay, seeing none, was there any correspondence received?
No.
Okay. We will move on then to item two, Mayor Comments. Mayor Driver?
My apologies, I'm not there, but I thought that I would keep my lung, non-COVID lung infection to myself. And I have nothing to report other than the Liberty Village discussions and meetings with the redevelopers. We try to hammer out a redevelopment agreement. Are continuing, but other than that, nothing else to report. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Parker?
Yeah, I don't have anything to report. At this point, I have to excuse myself from the council meeting last night.
No problem. Item four on the agenda is HPC comments. I don't see in the audience, the HPC chair or online, there was one HPC decision that was circulated to the board. It was a denial for 5 East Main Street. I've had no other communication with the property there, have we?
No, not that I have, no.
Okay. They do have a right of appeal. Is there a time limit on that?
No, I don't recall.
Well, it's not just a denial because they didn't submit all those paperwork.
That may be the case, but it's a denial is a denial. And so that's, if they, if they could resubmit with, and not come to us and go back to HPC, that's perfectly within their rights. But there is an appeal process to the, to the board for any denials of HPC they just wanted to.
I'm sure there was some time period.
Yeah, okay. That's, and that's the only thing I've got with HPC. Item five on the agenda is the approval of minutes more maintenance 2022 regular meeting. Those were previously circulated by, you know, Susan, who is on the road, texted me. I apologize for pulling out my phone in the middle of the meeting, but this is just for minutes purposes. Susan wanted to correct the minutes under Chair Items that I mentioned that Mrs. Engelhardt's property was next door to the site. She wanted to, instead of say next door to, she wanted to say borders. Okay. I mean, just reading that into the record so Susan doesn't have to on a bad connection.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
No, not a problem. Any other corrections or modifications for the minutes? Hearing that, take a motion in a second.
So, Mr. Cook?
Second, Hill?
I'll be.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Driver?
That's me.
Mr. Parker?
I have to abstain.
Thank you. Mr. Dashna?
Yes.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Ms. Whitesman?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
I'm staying.
Thank you.
That's all good.
I have, at least according to the minutes, Susan as excused from the May 10th minutes. Was she actually there? If she.
Oh, you're right. Susan, you weren't at the meeting.
Yeah, I wasn't, but I watched the minute. I watched, I, I watched the, the video. Does that count?
For purposes of minutes, technically right, but why don't we just mark you as abstained?
Okay, then just mark me as abstained, then, please.
All right, thank you.
Just mark me as abstained. Thank you.
All good. All right. Item six on the agenda is a completeness determination for Family Promise of Hunter County, block 19, lot 7 and 8. And as I said before, the chair is recusing, the vice chair is recusing, the former chair is recusing. So, Mr. Budney, gavel is yours to proceed here. Now, do you want us to step on to the dance? Would that be, that would be appropriate. More kosher?
Exactly what you're supposed to do.
Even for completeness? Yes. Even for completeness. Our mere presence could exert influence on that. Yes. And now, I was starting to say we shouldn't even be in the real, but we have this flag of religion on us over here.
Definitely. Correct.
All right, thank you, Jeff. So, we're here for completeness, Family Promise of Hunter County. We'll be reviewing their application for completeness and then possibly scheduling a future hearing. Cara, did you just summarize, I guess, what we've got, materials that were submitted that we have?
Absolutely, and I'm actually going to give that over to Bob. He took a look at everything. He submitted his, this report dated May 21st, 2022. So he can go through what he reviewed and what his conclusions were.
Oh, yeah, thank you. So, the report of May 21st essentially outlines what the application is. It's a use variance application. It actually qualifies also for a site plan element.
Can I just, I'm sorry, Mr. Parker, should he also leave?
Oh, that's right.
He doesn't have a conflict. Yeah, I understand. And I just wanted to just make sure. I'm just, I'm leaving.
I'll do whatever you think is the focus. There's probably.
Because any of them.
Okay. Thanks.
No, it doesn't. But, yeah, you can.
Just to confirm, we have four voting members.
We do, we have two virtually, and we have the two on tape.
So, again, it's a use variance application. It also falls under the threshold of site plan application. You have to define by the use variance. I outlined, I outlined the process here by which the board could consider the bifurcated process just the use variance, but it would have to be followed either by an application for a site plan or request, formal request for a waiver of site plan at which point the board, we need to decide if they qualify for, for a waiver from site plan. On page two, I outlined all the documentation submitted, including the application fees, escrow payments, et cetera. They submitted colored photographs of the site, basically of the building, and the plan, written description of what they intend to do in the way of internal renovation to the structure, and a copy of what I presume to be some sort of an old site plan for the site. It wasn't identified, it wasn't dated, but it shows existing site conditions at some point in time in the past. Went on to say that as a, as a use variance application, we don't have a specific checklist for variance applications. What the board's done in the past, you have to determine whether you feel you have adequate information to consider the application. I outlined a few things that I thought would be appropriate, board's discretion, whether it feels necessary in the consideration of the, as part of the hearing process, essentially a vicinity map that would show adjoining properties and an owner's list, filing a Form A with Borough Water and Swire. It may have actually already happened, I'm not sure. But if it hasn't, it should. It's some sort of a plan that would depict the property relationship to adjoining zoning, zoning criteria, and, and existing conditions on the site. There may be some pre-existing non-conformity with the site. If there are use variants of, can't refer to that on this, might, might trigger the necessity to consider the prior non-conformities. Some sort of a title search to indicate if there's any recorded restrictions or reasons on the property. And again, some representations have the site. If it is used by other elements, I understand it is a parking lot for the church. But just again, something on the record indicating what other uses are being made of the property. And I just, again, just concluded that it's, it's, there's no specific checklist or be, just some suggested recommendations for the board's consideration.
In terms of the bifurcated application, I mean, my understanding is, on its own, absent the use variance for the, for the proposed use, would there be, would there any other triggers for a full site plan? There's, my question is, there's no exterior modifications or parking modifications or.
All, under the definition of a minor site plan. I even quoted the minor site plan definition.
Okay.
Internal renovations qualify. It's not going to be a major site, but it will be a minor site.
Okay. Steve Gruber, on behalf of the applicant, Family Promise of Hunter County, want to thank the board's professionals for reviewing the application so quickly for completeness purposes, because there is an emergent need here to get before the board on this application in order to be able to make it come to fruition from financing and grants and all of that. They've been working on this for a long time and then determined that, it had been determined that they required a use variance application. So, my office filed it probably within a week to get something before the board, and we scrambled to get what we have, which is a prior site plan that shows the structures on the, on the, on a plan, and photographs of the building, and a detailed description of what we plan on doing there as we could provide. But we're going to supplement that at the time of public hearing with testimony from the applicant. We're going to set, supplement that by testimony from John Matt, our professional planner, who will present an exhibit, which I think will address a lot of the questions that Mr. Clerico has with respect to the surrounding area and other structures. You are correct, Mr. Step-In Chair, that we are proposing no additional exterior improvements whatsoever. Anything is interior. And with respect to the parking issue, these people don't have cars. There won't be parking other than the one or two supervised employees who will be on site. So, there's, there's not a major parking requirement here. We will address that all through testimony. Because the borough doesn't have a checklist for a use variance application, we respectfully suggest that you can deem this application complete this evening for use variance. And during, we, we know what Mr. Clerico's looking for and what he's asked us to produce, and we will do our best to provide as much of that information as possible, but I think that you'll be satisfied when you hear Mr. Matthews' testimony and what exhibits we present during the course of the public hearing, that at that point, we'll request a waiver from a formal minor site plan application and submit it. Because we did submit a site plan, and we're going to present some additional things. And there are no exterior improvements at all. We request that you deem the application complete tonight and then allow us to notice for public hearing. So, Bob, moving forward with that, so do we have sufficient, just going by your, in Rambo, do we have any sufficient for the minor site plan to go forward? Or do we need any other submissions?
As, as a minor site plan, you have a whole checklist to look at. So, from that standpoint, no. As Mr. Gruber indicated, if you process this, if you just deem the use variance application to be, you know, complete, because again, we don't have a checklist establishing criteria. And then as part of the hearing process, if they file a request for a formal request to waive a site plan, once you've heard the testimony on the use variance, and presumably, if you grant the use variance, you could then, at that point, determine whether you heard any issues in the testimony. It would be site plan issues, landscaping, lighting, whatever, you know, whatever it might be.
If the board went that direction though, that, that would probably delay. I, I would think that would delay the review process rather than submitting it upfront on the minor site plan.
Yeah, that, that would be a bit of a risk. The applicant would be, yes.
Okay. So, can we, have any questions from the board?
You, you could certainly ask, ask questions. I think that the main points here are that there is no checklist. So, whatever is required for this application, application, application fees, et cetera, all of that has been submitted to the board. And if this is processed as sole use variance application, which is what the applicant's requesting at this point, then everything has been submitted. So, the board would then presumably, if you have any specific questions, deem the application complete. And what you're hearing from the applicant's counsel is that they hear what else Bob is recommending to you, that you look at or take into consideration when evaluating not only the use variance, but the site plan that may be required if the use variance is approved, and that you'll have enough information. But certainly, if as the board is hearing this, they feel that they need more, whether it's on Bob's list or not on Bob's list, you have every ability to ask for whatever you feel you need throughout the process to make informed and appropriate decisions.
We understand that as well. Do you have any questions for professionals? On that? And who do we have on the phone? Do you have any questions? Hi. Did you have any questions for any of our professionals? She's shaking her head.
No, sorry, I've got a small child next to me, so I'm going to keep it quiet here.
And Jim, did you have any questions for professionals? For the.
No, I think the explanation by Bob was, you know, pretty complete. And it appears as if there's questions during the hearing that we'll get the answers anyway.
Okay. Okay, so, I mean, I'm inclined, if, if you're willing to take the risk, I'm inclined to either go to bifurcate or just do testimony for the use, understanding that, yeah, through, through testimony, there could be questions from the, from the board and the, and the public that could require more information.
That we're, we're fine with that. We're just, we're all, I think, on the same page that we're going to provide you with additional information that hopefully will satisfy that, what Mr. Clerico's looking for. And then we're going to request the waiver on the formal site plan. But, and you can always make us do it.
All right, so which step do we make?
Motion.
Motion, then we, then we get into scheduling.
Yeah, motion, second, deem it complete or incomplete, or it is maybe. I think I know which way we're going, and then schedule.
Okay, so I just need someone to make a motion to deem the application complete. And we'll stay to that. Okay.
I'm going.
Well, the people, the other people here have first this.
Yeah, I, I move to deem this application. Vote on it.
Okay.
Sufficient for a motion?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we have a second from online?
I'm a side second.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Ms. Whitesman?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Okay. So, do you have application complete now? What is our upcoming schedule?
The next meeting is actually three weeks from today, which gives the applicant a little bit more time. It is June 14th, the second Tuesday in June.
Okay. I'm available. Well, there's, so we have, so we have tonight, which is Captiva, which, which may or may not complete tonight.
Most likely, I would say. Might continue, yeah.
Okay, so there's a chance, so there's a, there's a good chance, I'll say, that the Captiva application, you know, will likely continue, depending how we get through tonight, would likely continue to the, to the 14th of June. And then the meeting after that is June 28th. So, I've seen in the past what we've done is, you can notice for that date, but with the understanding you might not be heard that night. We'd be in communication with you as to how, depending where your professionals are available. And if we are going late that night, we would just make an announcement either before that we would continue your application to the next meeting.
Yeah, we would appreciate the opportunity to notice for June 14th, even if technically we don't get reached because of the other application, because sometimes things happen and.
Sure.
You know, maybe that application, for some reason, doesn't happen on the 14th, and we can't be heard. And that way, we have, we have no sense.
Okay.
We understand it might not be able to be heard on the 14th, but we'd like to notice for.
Okay.
Yeah, because generally, I would defer to the chairman and Mr. Budney, you know, as far as order of that, you know, since the next application has been ongoing, they would be.
Yes, understood. Okay. We, we do have a sense of urgency, as you can tell, but I understand a priority. Okay. So that we would, so we've been making that. If we are, if they do continue, if Captiva does continue to be June 14th meeting, we could, we would be in communication with the, with Mr. Gruber.
Yes.
About either.
Well, they could, they could notice, and then we could make it a, I would assume that we could make an announcement at that point on the 14th to continue both, you know, that application to the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Didn't mean to clear out half the room. We just picked the exact spot that they were saying about everybody.
And just for the record, I, I don't anticipate writing a technical report on this because there's nothing.
Pretty much it.
Well, it's just, I'll be at the hearing.
Okay. And Beth, were you, did you have a plan?
I will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Budney. That's a big cheer, Phil.
Excellent.
Excellent. All right, item seven on our agenda this evening is the continuation of the public hearing. Captiva name should have LLC Block 5, lot 22, beginning from March 8th, March 22nd, and equal 12, 2022. And I'm going to, I, I misplaced my notes to where we were in terms of witnesses. Do you have that?
I had that we pick up with the professionals' questions of the engineer traffic engine.
Excellent. That's what I had to. Fantastic, because I, I had it on a piece of paper, which I seem to not have taken from my desk. So, all right. That's what we'll do. So, we're gonna, we do have, oh, actually, I'm going to pause here because Ms. Engelhardt is walking in. So, so she doesn't have to watch a stitch of recording. She can come in right now and have all of Captiva because she was her case from the prior, but we, you know, it all works.
The family just dropped me off. I'm handling.
All right, so I'll just say for the record before we start, where we left off with exhibits for the applicant, I have the next number as A9 when we get there. And the next number I had for the board's exhibits was PB4, and we're actually going to mark as PB4. Let Beth's updated plan of support, which was updated in March 23rd, 2026.
Okay, so what I'm going to do right now is I'm promoting to panelists, applicant computer. So, right in front of you, it should say you're going to reconnect as, as a panelist.
Join.
Yeah. And so that will, if you could turn your camera on on that one there on Zoom, so everyone can see. If you don't work there about the microphone, this system will pick it up. So, if you got muted, and that way. Here, who wants to share? So, we were, we're going to then go to, I guess, we're gonna then go to, I guess, we do, so we do have updated review letters from Mr. Clerco.
I was just gonna say, yeah.
Ms. McManus.
I have, so I have the one marked as PV two for Bob, February twenty eighth. I'm missing your updated ones. What was that?
May twenty first.
May twenty first. Okay, that will be PV five.
So I think at this point, maybe let's start with Bob's review letter. Uh, and since we're talking about engineering testimony, and we'll we'll go with Bob and then we'll let John ask if there's any questions.
Yeah, so, you know, as the board is aware, we've submitted some updated plans that if possible, I'd like to have Mr. Ho just run through the changes of those plans.
Fantastic.
Hopefully, we'll answer some questions during his testimony.
Perfect.
It shouldn't take long.
No, that's 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 great. All right.
Why don't we mark those as well? And starting with A nine, let's just identify name, date.
So, Mr. Ho, so first of all, feel like I need to give my intro. As you call, I'm Sean McGowan, I'm the applicant's attorney. Eric Ho is the civil site engineer, as well as traffic, uh, traffic engineer. As we discussed, we submitted some revised plan.
Yeah.
Mr. Ho is going to give you the brief overview of those revised plans or revisions. Mr. Ho, I'd like to remind you that you remain under oath. So you don't need to swear in the in again, correct?
No, he's sworn in and he's very qualified.
Well, good.
Okay, you should be able to share if you want to bring up anything there.
Yes. And then this is A nine. And this is going to be a colorized landscape exhibit.
Prepared by your office, sir.
Verbiage.
Can you just give me the date on that? These is. Sorry. Originally dated three twenty two twenty two with a revision date of five eighteen twenty two. And that's just one sheet, correct?
That's just one sheet, correct?
And those were submitted, right, to us already, or is this, yeah, it's on exhibit, last time I looked at stuff, yeah?
Yep, you should do it as.
All right, so to go over the proposed site plan changes, I'd like to show this landscape rendering. First of all, the exit driveway onto Walter E. Farm Boulevard has been widened to twenty feet as per the fire marshal. The sidewalks have been modified to meet RSIS design standards. As you can see, we're proposing sidewalks along both the Hopewell Avenue and the Walter E. Forum Boulevard frontages. To access building A, we have a six-foot sidewalk located on the south side of the surface parking spaces. And it will go under the building to access the door into building A. We have a center sidewalk located on the south side of the center drive aisle, connecting Hopewell Avenue to Walter E. Forum Boulevard. And we also have access to building B with a sidewalk located on the east side of the surface parking spaces as indicated here. We also provided crosswalks in front of the parking garage entrances for both building B and also building A. As far as parking, I would like to mention that there was a parking conflict brought up in the engineering review letter from Van Cleef for the perpendicular spaces located in the surface lot for building A. I will zoom in on that location. Right over here, these spaces here. We provided wheel stops to avoid conflict. But if the wheel stops aren't sufficient, we we have the ability to shift the parking spaces closer to Hopewell Avenue to create a two-foot separation. We can't comply with that. As far as the interior parking plan, I would like to go back to the submitted site plan drawings. And that would be sheet two point two of our site plan sets. We made a few revisions to the garage parking layout. It has been modified to eliminate six of the seven compact spaces. There will be one remaining with an eight-foot width, which is located in the parking garage for building A. As far as the drainage plan modifications.
Eric, what is the purpose of having a compact space there? Since, you know, we eliminated all but one, there's obviously a reason why we did not eliminate that.
That was just a a factor of the length of wall the architect has provided. At that junction, we could only fit an eight-foot wide parking space.
Okay.
Along that side.
So there is, there is a reason behind it.
Yes.
There was a comment in the review letter about the turning, turning in there. Your, it's your professional opinion that that is safe with that compact space there? That that turned into that car is safe, correct?
Yes, uh, we can do a template to show, but vehicles entering this section of the parking garage can come in and exit while compact cars park in that space.
Okay, and there was testimony last time that, first of all, the the garage is gated, correct? There's gated access?
Yes.
So only tenants will be able to access the indoor parking garage?
Yes, and also all spaces will be assigned to tenants as well.
So the purpose being that the tenants will have familiarity and know where they're going and they're not just gonna be wandering around the parking garage, correct?
Correct. Going to go to sheet in three point three. The location of the southern detention basin, there was a conflict with that, so it was relocated to the south. So it doesn't conflict with the building A garage. And soil testing has been performed at the relocated basin locations. We also revised the landscaping plan. I'll go back to the landscape rendering, show that. I mean, we're going back to A nine? Correct. Okay. An additional eight street trees along Walter E. Forum Boulevard on the north side of the proposed driveway were added to the site plan. An additional ornamental tree has been provided for each surface parking lot area. This was to provide additional shade for the parking lot. One tree was located here on the south side of the surface parking area, and the other added tree was on the south side of the building B surface lot. We also added three evergreen shrubs. And this was located in front of the trash room access for building B along the center drive aisle. The lighting has also been modified to show lighting intensities to further comply with the borough ordinance. The maximum foot candles have been reduced from nine point eight nine foot candles to two point oh five foot candles with an average reduced from two point five nine foot candles to zero point eight foot. This has been accomplished by providing less intense lighting fixtures. And this is, this is really the minimum lighting intensity that we felt was safe for pedestrians for the proposed development. So that was really all the site plan changes.
Thanks. Before we hand it over to questions, there was a question at the time from the board about the allocation of electric vehicle charging station parking spaces.
Oh, I think I skipped.
Yeah, no problem. That's why I'm here. The board had asked us, or or see to the board or Mr. Clerco had asked, or maybe it was Mr. Trout, had asked for some clarification. I'm sorry, let me, let me go back to the fire marshal report. The fire marshal report originally said that he did not want to have any of the EVSCs located within the building. We could comply with that. But that left a situation where all of the EVSCs were going to be outdoors. And, you know, how do we, how does that work, logistically speaking? So there was a question from the board as far as, you know, is that a regulation? Or, you know, what is the purpose behind that? Is there something, a regulation or a law, ordinance, statute behind that?
Yeah.
Did you want to do it?
Yes, we did add, before I get into that real quick, we did add eight additional electric vehicle parking spaces to get to a total of twenty nine EV spaces provided. Right now, they are located all in the surface parking area. Right now, we have twenty three in front of building A and and six in front of building B. As I look, look through the the state regulations, I I didn't find any restriction of having EV spaces located within garages. And it 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 is my opinion that it makes more sense for this specific development to spread it out between the assigned parking spaces and the visitor spaces in the surface parking area. And we can comply with that, yes.
Okay, just I I did some legal research myself, and I couldn't find anything preventing the EVSCs from being placed inside a garage. I was able to locate fairly easily of a, it's called Charge, I'm having to submit this as an exhibit if you'd like. You only have one copy. You have it too, great. It's a, it's Charge of Your Town, Best Manager Practices to Ensure Your Town is EV Right. It's published by the state of New Jersey, I believe it's DCA, the VPU, and the DEP. And there are many references in this document to placing EVSCs in garages. And then further, there are safety recommendations. And essentially, it says that your your fire, your emergency response units, fire and police should receive training on what were to happen if there were to be a fire with one of these electric vehicles or the charging station. You know, it's it's my client's opinion that, you know, this is gonna be an issue that everyone, not just Borough of Flemington, is gonna be facing over the next twenty years as we transition to electric vehicles. And there's no way that EVSCs will not be able to be in garages. They already are, and they will continue to be as structured parking, you know, becomes more and more prevalent. So the applicant feels that, logistically speaking, to place the EVSCs within the building. You know, Eric even has a breakdown that he can share with you that he would suggest, but of course, we're open to suggestions as well.
Should I give you the breakdown?
Yeah, you can give us the breakdown that you would suggest, yeah.
My opinion, the ideal EV breakdown, and this is just proportional for the the spaces in each area, would be twelve EV parking spaces located within the building A garage, ten EV spaces within the building D garage, five spaces in the building A surface parking area, and two spaces within building D service to get to the twenty nine total.
So that's what we would be proposing, but then, you know, we would not be in compliance with, full compliance with the Fire Marshal's previous letter prior to when he issued the letter saying he was satisfied with our changes. So, you know, we'd like some feedback from the board on that point.
Well, we will get you that feedback.
Okay, that's all. Okay. One other point that I wanted to bring up was in the traffic review letter, we altered the radius curves, correct?
Yes, we went from a five-foot radius driveways along Hopewell Avenue, and we doubled that radius to ten feet two. As per comments, it's better.
Right, well, I think they, the, uh, RSIS requires twenty, there would be design waiver from RSIS that were for showing ten.
Yes.
So we now have a design waiver for that. I think, oh, the sewer, just wanted to bring up sewer real fast, that we did receive a, a letter from the sewer.
Yes, we, we currently show pumps for the sanitary connection to Hopewell Avenue, which was originally requested by Flemington Water and Sewer Division. We recently received a letter from Water and Sewer. It generally doesn't have any issue with capacity, and it's more or less a general approval letter stating, but it does state that the NJDEP would have to approve these pumps when acquiring the treatment works approval that which is required.
And, you know, Mr. Clerco highlighted that any action by the board would be conditioned upon us complying to the sewer authorities' satisfaction, whether it's pumps or it's gravity fed. And and, yeah, I can understand that, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I believe I can turn it over to you, Mr. Clerco.
Great, thanks. So let's, let's go to professional questions on of the engineering. We'll start with Bob, and then we'll go to traffic, and then we'll go to Beth.
Well, aside from what's in the report, what I just heard this evening, and I didn't realize prior to this, some of the additional landscaping you're proposing is over the top of that underground basin. You have to defer to that, but depending on the type of landscaping, is it, it may not be able to be constructed in those particular locations.
Okay, which, which landscaping?
The one in front of building A, where you shifted, it's part, that basin, I believe, is partially under the parking lot and partially under the landscape area in the front, I think.
It's very close to, I thought it was a little further east than anything, but yes.
If there's a, if there's a conflict, they're concluding you from putting your tree over the top of that.
Correct.
That needs to be taken into consideration. I don't have any particular questions. I got a lot in the report.
Yeah, so why don't, why don't we, why don't we go through the review letter? Because obviously, there were updates. And I think that maybe we can start, I guess, on page four, I guess, the RSIS section, I think is the first place we've got conditions being addressed.
Yeah, first couple pages, just identify the documentation record, including what was, and you read on here, the the new information that being reviewed as part of the May twenty third report. Yeah, page four, we just start with the site layout residential improvement standards. The first comment there. So with sidewalk issues, as Eric indicated, they widened sidewalks out to sixty to be compliant with the RSIS standard. I I said it was partially addressed because this actually accesses doors into the building that are within that sixty. We'd have to see some sort of information from the, from the architect as well, but I believe those doors swing out, and I believe there's certain criteria that the sidewalk may need to be wider in that particular area, or the doors may need to be recessed in order to be compliant with the access into the building. One of the charges the board would have in reviewing an application is the best of their ability, based on information provided by the applicant, determine that this is ADA compliant in all, in all aspects, and I'm just looking at it. I'm not sure that aspect of it is.
So if if you don't have direct response right now, maybe we can get that later from the engineer for the architect?
I would be the opposite.
Yeah, and and we do plan to recall the architect, obviously, because we we got two, obviously, various examples, you're aware.
Yeah.
Oh, we got to later, but we can.
Okay, so we'll, we'll come back to that, then I guess we can get to the architect, okay.
The second item on two, two dot two A was the turning templates. Eric indicated that they're going to be provided there. It's, as of now, it's not an addressed item because the information is not of record.
It's something that'll be provided there.
Correct.
The, we heard testimony about the last meeting, and we heard it again this evening, that it's gonna be gated access to the parking garages, it'll be assigned to spaces only to tenants. The mechanism, how that functions would would be part and parcel of the plan, but that's the representation here. So it wasn't clear to me that this, the the surface parking that's out front, none of that is assigned to tenants. That's strictly for visitor parking.
That's my understanding.
It would be visitor parking, but with the EVSCs, again, as, you know, society-wide moves, you know, we're proposing to have twelve spaces within the building footprint. Someone might have to be assigned outside too. We've got plenty of access parking. That would be practical.
And the issue on safety, Eric indicated that the they can make the adjustment to get the two-foot separation. So that item, that revision will be made as part of the plan.
So your recommendation is to not accept the bumps, but rather shift it into two-foot separation.
Yeah, what you have is an eighteen-foot space is perfectly legitimate, but it's supposed to allow for overhang. And if you butt it right up to a passenger door sitting on it, the car, that's not a good situation. Just asking for conflict. So, yeah, at least a two-foot separation would give you the patented two-foot overhang. Item D. Okay, this is where they eliminated a lot of deficient parking spaces within the parking garage. One of the changes must have resulted in the architect making the building a little bit wider, because before they had a seventeen-foot deep space, and now they have eighteen-foot deep, so some dimensionally, something must have changed inside the building. And as you heard, there's still the one deficient parking space, which you heard testimony on tonight. That would require some sort of relief from RSIS standards.
We're requesting a design waiver for that compact car.
The AD ramp issue on going up to page six here was addressed. Sidewalk ADA access. Yeah, what what we need on here eventually is very detailed plans of each individual handicap ramp at some sort of a larger scale detail, typically these are done on individual basis, where you actually see the specific dimensions, grade, elevations, it's determined they're compliant. So A was basically have a a better detail of the, the representation here is that they're all, they're all compliant. Just need a detail that would support that. Okay, sidewalk, again, entrances, again, it's just a question about the sidewalk with the with it, with the doors, which essentially would be, as it's partially addressed, and I refer back to a prior comment, two point one. C was the again, specific details on the curb ramps. It's currently not, it's part of the plan, it needs to be part of the plan.
Well, that'll be provided, resolution provides, correct?
D was again, access points into the building, when you see that that the doors are not in conflict with the sidewalk or access to the building. Again, that can either be addressed by the architect or the engineer.
Yeah, let's ask the architect that, because.
I was looking for dimensions on the, it was partially addressed. They've offset the cut, they've offset the sidewalk from the curb on Walter Ferrand Boulevard. And the, but now it's, now it basically runs through every utility pole we have out there. So either they have to change the offset so they can avoid the poles, or they they need to relocate the poles as part of the project. Two point four, parking loading requirements, that first one was just a statement of fact, B. It was an open item, so this was a whole discussion about the spaces, and if you've heard enough on that tonight, you've heard that testimony.
Yeah, we've heard the testimony, I think, I think we can, well, the board will discuss it when we get to discuss, let's, let's leave it for them.
And C is the same thing, it's with the EV spaces. Uh and C is the same thing, it's with the EV spaces, um and so we'd like to hear from uh Jay's office on whether they feel that's compliant or not. Uh and again, I defer, they they have, we heard testimony, believe last month, they have loading spaces. I don't, we um this whether the testimony is to whether the adequacy of those for for this particular use. Um they're on the plan, they're dimensioned, um and we did hear testimony on that uh the last meeting. Section three goes into site grad rating and the underground utilities. Uh again, they relocated the underground basin, um there's other comments in section four of the report indicating it's conditionally addressed, there are some design issues with the system, it has been relocated to be in compliance with the way the testing is now for the facility, um on B, um that was the that was the um issue with in the prior plan, the underground basin could flip with the subsurface parking garage, that's been addressed. Again, subject to some uh compliance and some issues in section four of the report. Uh three point two, uh. Maybe we can hear some testimony on this, the uh the basin is behind building B. Uh we have requested a um that some sort of stable access be constructed or be provided to that building for vehicular access for maintenance purposes. Uh the response when we got back from the project engineer was that it was not possible to to have that, uh so I think we need to hear some testimony about A, why it's not possible, B, what kind of vehicles they have to get back there and how they're going to get them there. And it kind of dovetailed into, uh yeah, with with the fire marshal, he's indicating that there were some open items, but he felt they could be resolved. We don't, we never, uh you know, identified what those items were, so I'm not sure vehicular access to the back of building is an old is also an open item for the fire marshal or not. Um so I think we just need to hear how vehicular uh or maintenance equipment access is going to be provided to that particular uh underground facility.
Do you want to add some questions?
Yeah. Have it be on the current list of the survey.
The 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 reason uh we didn't uh we couldn't provide a stabilized uh access way on the other side of building B was because of the DEP restrictions. There's a twenty-five foot uh repairing buffer on the north side of building B that if we provided a stabilized path there, it would uh conflict with, and I believe there was wetlands on the other side that we didn't want to get uh that we we didn't, we couldn't uh encumber. Uh another possibility would be through the garage, if we had an emergency gate through the garage for maintenance vehicles to access the rear that way. Uh the if if that isn't applicable, if that can't work, then we would have to go to the DEP and and try to get some kind of, maybe we can do grass pavers or something around the north side of the building, but uh I'm not positive they would approve that in the repairing.
Our our impression that when we spoke with the fire marshal is that those open items were fire safety, design, construction issues that the uh fire, that he would like to be involved in, the fire department would be involved in uh code compliance, and the architect can provide testimony on this when he comes up. Um but it was not related to this, of course, you know, it's hearsay for me to say that, but um that was our impression and and.
He previously wanted access when we were proposing the parking lot in the rear of building B. Uh when we eliminated that, uh it eliminated his concerns of access from there.
That's correct, he was concerned about there being uh he didn't get to a vehicle in the rear, couldn't take it underneath the building. Um so when we eliminated the parking lot in the rear of the building, that was what allowed him to send a letter saying that we couldn't uh though that he was satisfied with our responses.
Well, the issue of the planning board needs to deal with under the stormwater regulations is that you, I don't know if you have or not, perhaps you have already. Um submitted an operation and maintenance manual, the type of of facilities, the best management practice facilities you're putting there do require maintenance through a through some sort of a vehicle backing truck or something, depending on the specificity of what you're proposing. So we need to know that what you're proposing here, in fact, you can maintain. Um i- if that's some alternative of having an access to the building, if we let certain types of vehicle, we need to know what that is. Of course, it went through the building, that's going to affect your parking in the garage area itself, so then we have to, we have to know how that's going to work. Um if a stable access, uh and again, stable access doesn't need to have to pay, just has to be a stable access, so it could be paved, it could be brass, you know, turf paper blocks or something like that. Um but, you know, it it has, ability of a vehicle to get back there has to be documented, that requires some relief in DEP. Then you have to, you have to propose something that makes this work.
Got you. Uh, yes, uh I I would say it's either one of two ways, either we're gonna have an emergency uh gate on the back of building B and uh obviously that would affect some parking and uh that would be a management issue as far as when that gate needs to be accessed, then the cars would need to move, would probably take up two two spaces. And the other option is, I can, I can, I can start talking, we currently have an application out with the DEP, I can look into providing some kind of stabilized that encumbers path that encumbered the twenty-five foot repair.
That's something the applicant is or to uh accept as a condition if the board can see that.
Yeah, the only caveat I would put there is if if this, again, if the ultimate thing is the board approves that with a condition and then the plan goes back where we lost four parking spaces in the garage, that's obviously.
Well, that would be a varied situation.
It's something different than what's more accurate, but by the same token, um if you're proposing to put a stable access outside and you can't get DEP approval, then you haven't met the condition of approval.
Right.
I I don't personally think how you accomplish it is is necessarily an issue, the fact that you can accomplish it is what something we have to make it to the record, so.
I think that brings us to the stormwater management section, right?
I am just, the resident B was conditionally addressed, that was a soil testing, two point three, um was not addressed. Oh, we we do need to have details of the retaining walls on on the site. Not necessarily structural detail, but we need to know what type of wall is being proposed, we need to know the disturbance associated. We need to know that the type of wall you're proposing can in fact physically be built within the limitations or the confines of the area. That that needs to be part and parcel of the plan. And this again, it varies DEP, it's the um associates, a number of them that are associated with this project, uh stormwater management, um. They, but again, I went, I can, I'll just gloss over most of this, they basically complied uh with a a lot of the previously deficient and non-compliant elements of the design by making certain changes. I did my best to try to explain in layman's terms here what those changes were, uh but they basically do modification of design. Uh they've eliminated some of the facilities that were were previously non-compliant. Uh and I think that pretty much takes you through the whole the whole section here. Go to four point two drainage area maps, um we do need some um more detail and specificity in the maps. Just in looking at what we have, it looks like the grading on parking lot A uh would not actually make it uh into the basin that's there, so either they're gonna have to change the grading in on that area or they're gonna have to add another basin, but again, that level of detail on the grading uh for the for those for the drainage areas need to be part and parcel of the um of this submission.
As part of residential compliance or?
It it could be, I I'm pointing out something that's non-compliant right now, you have to address it somehow. Um but yeah, um however you end up with with the grading on this, we need a detailed plan that confirms that in fact what you're proposing actually works.
Yeah.
That was item four point two A, um. Four point three was on the testing, um. Can we have updated reports? There's a little bit of conflict between how big certain logs are labeled and numbered on the different reports. So a little bit of confusion, there needs to be uh needs to be consistency with how everything is labeled, so we can clearly understand what soil logs go with, what's being represented on a particular plant, um. That's more of a clarification, I I believe we understand how it works, but you just looking at the record, you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily be able to follow it. Um on B, um with the soil logs, there there are, again, you went through all the effort of doing specific soil logs, the the details for the um the underground bases need to be altered so that they reflect the consistency with the soil. But they can have to be a lot deeper, some of these, especially the ones in front of A, which are currently in fill. They can't just be four foot deep because that's going to leave you in the fill, they have to be extended, and so they each, they have to be very specific to the soil logs in in those particular locations. Uh I don't think it'll change necessarily the footprint, but it would certainly change the detail of the construction. And the soil report needs to be part of the just on drainage analysis, that needs to be incorporated, that was I have seen four point four recharge standards. Um, which is more of a technical thing, we're looking for some clarification on some of the uh classification of the materials on on the site, um that were listed as um. Sure, and that becomes more of a technical thing, you're you're basing your calculation on certain classifications on the plan, it weren't clear to us where those were occurring, so you just need to clarify, then in fact, what you're representing is being compliant with recharge based on surface classifications or in fact exist. Okay, it was back on basin, it was conditionally addressed, again, refer back to prior comments. On the runoff standards, A, they they have addressed that after those that first issue, uh they addressed the, well, B was just a for factual information, C, was something that was previously non-compliant is now compliant, and again, I'd explain in here how it became compliant. Four point six um is no longer applicable, uh again, for the reasons stated, uh four point six A, um.
Yeah, two four six.
Yeah.
It's all right, but but we're up to uh ratio.
Yeah, it was eight, four point six on page thirteen, thank you. Uh it's partially addressed, again, the O and N manual is provided, again, we outlining a number of things that may be incorporated into that manual. Again, that's just information that has to be incorporated into that particular document. And part and parcel of that would be the type of equipment, going back on the access type of equipment that would be used to maintain uh those facilities, uh four point seven is miscellaneous comments. Again, there was some nomenclature or inconsistency in in information, it was uh areas of drainage that were documented differently, two different elements of the report. Uh B was a referred, wasn't addressed, refer back to a prior comment, um. Are there gonna be four drains in the garage?
Yeah, our architect will.
Oh, so they're gonna need to be incorporated, where those drains go needs to be incorporated into the stormwater plan. And there's a further detail of groundwater amount, the analysis that we're getting incorporated into the uh into the stormwater report. Uh on utilities, item five point one was just a uh factual thing. Uh five point two was the um was the fire marshal partially addressed, um they did, they had provided the twenty-foot access road. Uh but that could, that refer back to prior comments on the three point two. On the five point three, uh sanitary sewer connections, uh so it was conditionally addressed. Uh there was a re- a report that came through uh Jerry Harris, a borough engineer. Um and and in the report, there was a couple of references on the sewer connections. It weren't quite clear to me as to what they were, what they, Borough was saying, what, if if they're talking with Jerry, what I indicated in here. So some four, I broke these down, actually, there are four conditions, two two of which are just conditions of approval. Uh the Borough's not gonna want, they're not gonna own the pumps or the pumping stations that were referenced earlier. They're gonna be owned by the by the um by the presumably the owner of the property. Um and that the uh the details need to be incorporated following the Borough's standards, that's A and B, those would just be conditions of the board approval. C and D sort of inferred that what they were proposing really wasn't something the Borough was looking for. Um and on the issue with D, with the DEP permits, they were indicating that again, the way the way they wrote this, uh that the they didn't think the DEP would approve them for the the purpose of why they were being shown, so. Uh again, the Borough checklist required that they have a response, we have a response. Uh the response has these conditions in it, the board could act on the approval based on that response, however, if in the course of addressing those conditions, it comes back with a whole different plan or something, again, it might force the applicant to come back, show the board what that plan was, again, depending on the nature of the of the change itself. I'm just pointing out, there's two elements of this where uh Jerry is indicating that this may not end up to be the 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 utility connection so- solution on on the sanitary end of things.
Yeah, and that was a testimony that that Mr. Ho provided earlier in that, you know, originally, we've been working on the sewer for many years and direction was provided. What, three years ago at least?
Yeah, about three years ago, they they requested that we put pumps to take the sanitary to Hopewell Avenue. Uh but it can work elevation-wise, gravity, uh but we put pumps uh to satisfy the waters who are.
But if that won't work, the the gravity will will work.
Yeah, I mean, the planning board's not here, we're not dealing with that issue, we are charged as to make sure that we have input back on utility issues and we have it.
Yeah.
It is, there's there's two, there's two issues here, there seem to be a little I don't want to use the word vague, but they they seem to be alluding to something else that might be problematic.
Yeah, and I've been trying to reach out uh to the Water and Sewer uh and uh to coordinate that sanitary.
Uh five point four, just deal with the overhead utility lines, uh showing uh their their location of the plan. Uh gas service, uh again, something kind of very similar. Uh the landscaping that deferred to to that, but I did, as we heard earlier, I I think there might be a conflict with some of the trees now with the underground basin as it was uh as it's been relocated. Uh the lighting, again, I defer to that on this, because you heard the testimony, they modified the design, it's still not not necessarily compliant. Traffic import, whatever, deferred to Jay's office on that, the environmental impact statement is deferred to the environmental commission. And there's a whole bunch of construction details that will need to be uh incorporated in in some of which we mentioned earlier. And then they listed all the outside entities um that we need to act on this, I think we may have, it might be in the record, something from the planning board, I don't recall. Uh but irrespective, um you know, getting obtaining unconditional approval from old age seems to have to be a condition and and award action.
All right, so. So let me, let me, uh that's why we've got, like I said, we're gonna go to traffic, so John Ray is here instead of Jay. Travel, and so John should be able to, you've got questions for the engineer?
Uh, good evening, uh hello, everybody, and I'm glad to be sitting in for Jake uh this evening. Uh I'm the Ray in McDonough and Ray, uh so um Jay's been my business partner for a long time and I'm proud to have him. Uh I did go over the file with Jay and I have reviewed all of the reports, the plans, and just a couple of minor uh items I have to discuss. I agree with Mr. Clerico on the uh the two parking spaces where he's recommended they be shifted a little bit closer to Hopewell Avenue to better protect uh those those vehicles from the uh the shorter parking spaces that are in the surface lot in front of building A, I agree with that. I also agree that as long as there's no restriction against putting the electric vehicle parking spaces under the garage in buildings A and B, that uh putting them under the garages proportionally with respect to the number of parking spaces that are inside and outside, that makes sense. And that's that's something that should be done, uh notwithstanding the uh uh the remarks from the fire marshal, if if it's permitted, it's permitted for a reason and uh we should do that, do that to better spread out the uh electric vehicle parking spaces.
Before you get off, I just want to make sure, and I'm asking power this question, the fire marshal's letter to us is what weight, let me put it that way, is advisory to the planning board? Is it's, is it, is it, you know, is it compelling us to do one thing or another, like what's the, what's the statute? Is it's, is it, is it, is it compelling us to do one thing or another? Like, what's the, what's the statute for a weight that we, like, if, like, if the environmental commission writes a review letter, that's something that we consider in part of our deliberation.
Correct.
But does the fire marshal's letter have that same weight or does Karen with?
This is our Karen answer. Let me just chime in on something. I I went to the first recon meeting for the Union Hotel.
Yeah.
They're gonna be putting them in the garage there. And there's certain standards they have to meet. The fire marshal was part of also the meeting.
Right.
So I can't speak for him, but they're they're doing it in that particular part of the garage.
Okay.
So I would say that the project has to comply with all applicable fire code requirements.
Right.
Presumably, the fire marshal is evaluating the fire code and telling you what does and what does not comply.
Right.
Anything that specifically doesn't comply, say that anything else that's a recommendation that will further the safety or further their maneuverability around a site, ability to access the site, anything along those lines is recommendation only.
Okay.
But again, you can give it the way it is.
Okay, that's that's kind of where I was going.
I don't have in front of me because I thought we were behind the fire marshal issues, but if I recall correctly, uh have that caveat. From what I remember from his comments, it was sort of, uh he made them in a fashion that I don't know. I had heard that fires can be challenging, so the E V S E should probably go outside.
Gotcha. Okay, well, that's.
But I have them here. I can, I can find it.
But that that's fine. I'm with the board to discuss when we get there, but it just because John was asking the question, right? You're bringing it up right now. He has testimony from this witness about the desired distribution. I just, just so that we're all clear on what's possible. That's why. Okay, I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
That's that not not a problem. I I that's good for clarification. Uh I think I heard earlier that, uh and and I may have misheard, did the applicant actually get a design waiver from D C A for the ten foot curb returns on the driveway and roadway connections to Hopewell Avenue? And I'm only asking that question because it may be easier for the board to just grant them a de minimis exception. Uh I have no problem with the ten foot curb returns, but it may be easier, like I said, for the board to just grant a de minimis exception rather than have the applicant go through the process of getting a waiver from D C A. Uh that can take some time, but that's why I'm asking the question. Has that waiver been obtained obtained from the D C A for that design exception?
No, no, it has not. So the de minimis exception would be the request.
Okay, and and I guess the last thing I have is there was a recommendation in the traffic report, which we agree with uh to shift ten seconds of green time from the North Main Street approach to the signal to the Walterie Ferran Boulevard approach in order to optimize the signal timing, reduce delays at the intersection. We agree with that. Of course, that intersection is under the jurisdiction of Hunterden County and I just wanted to ask the applicant if there's been any update on that. Has the county been notified of this uh recommendation?
Yes, we submitted an application to the county and we submitted our traffic report, and that's actually why we optimized the signal timing. It was recommended by the county.
Okay, we have no exception to that. We think it'll better balance the delays and it's a good recommendation. And that's really all I have for now.
Great, thanks, John. Beth, you got questions?
Yeah, just a couple. Uh first, I'm sorry, on the E V spaces. I just want to be clear about one thing. So all of your parking spaces in the garages are going to be reserved for tenants specifically, correct?
Correct.
And is it still the case that surface parking spaces will not be reserved, or will there be some portion that's reserved?
It's my understanding that they are for visitors. But as as you said, as our attorney said earlier, there might be a condition where it would have to be shuffled.
I just, I guess my concern is, I I don't have a concern if residents use the surface parking spaces. That's certainly not a concern I'm trying to raise, but I just want to make sure that we have adequate unreserved parking spaces on the site for visitors. So I just want to make sure that there's adequate of those surface parking spaces to be available to anybody that might use them.
The the intention is all those surface parking spaces will will be for visitors. That's the intention of the design here.
So they're not, okay, oh.
I think the only time that an exception to that would be made is if someone has an electric car and all the other electric vehicle charging stations have within the building have been used. Um I have not spoken particularly with the applicant about, you know, this exact process, what would happen, whether they would just have that person park outside within an unassigned space outside, or if they might make an exception and have uh you know, a single parking space for an electric vehicle charging, uh electric vehicle assigned to a E V S E outside.
Okay, it's just, I I think, I I think I'm, I'm sure folks have the same concern, but you know, I want to make sure that the parking spaces in the garages are fully utilized by tenants um and that there's adequate surface parking spaces for maybe for carryover tenants, but also for visitors. I think we're on the same page. There's probably some language that needs to be crafted in the resolution that accomplishes this.
I think that can be done.
Okay.
I think that, again, kind of going back to uh what I brought up earlier, and that this is something that not just the Borough of Flemington and this particular applicant is dealing with. It's the uh you know, planning for the future with the transition to electric vehicles and tenants having electric vehicles that there's got to be some give and take as far as that goes, um you know, over the next period of time, twenty years, whatever it's gonna be.
Okay, great. And then, let's see, just a couple other items for the uh for the engineer. I just want to be clear for your side. This might be an architect question, I'm sorry, but your signage, you're not proposing any at this time, but you're just simply committing to compliance.
Compliance, and if not, then we would have to come back.
Okay.
Quite a lot to come back.
On the crosswalks, I just wanted to confirm that there either is or there will be a crosswalk provided across Walterie Ferran at the proposed site access.
Right, right now, we have a proposed sidewalk, and we did that because the driveway has an apron because that is a county road and that's typically what they desire. If we wanted to do a crosswalk over pavement, we can do, we can mimic the driveways on Hope Well Avenue and do a curved radius and then provide a crosswalk, but that's uh I would say up to the county what they what they want over there as far as the driveway configuration.
I'd like to recommend that the applicant provide a crosswalk in that area if the county denies the ability to do so. I wouldn't suggest that they need to come back to the board, but I would like them to at least have the burden of seeking the approval from the county for that, for that piece.
Okay.
So so the eight, so so just make sure I got this right. What you're saying about is that the access to Ferran is center site on the left side, which is right now apron. That's what's the county.
Yes, and we have the proposed sidewalk uh along Walterie Firm Boulevard, so we don't, we don't have a proposed crosswalk there.
Because you've got, because you've got sidewalk across. And you're saying we'd rather see them as curb cut with crosswalk.
Yeah, I'd really like to have a crosswalk in that area.
There's a huge amount of kit set, yeah.
While they walk usually, they walk outside of the street.
Yeah. Uh let's see. Wonderful. Um I just wanna, um actually, on the E V, I just want to echo support for providing those spaces in the garage, uh just for the record. Uh additional topic in my memo is regarding lighting. You guys have made substantial changes. I have no further comments. I do note that I still think we need relief, but I think the changes are sufficient enough such that I'm comfortable with the lighting levels that I propose. Uh landscape design, uh I am let's see, largely satisfied with the change. I do have uh one outstanding item, notwithstanding the uh item that Bob pointed out, the potential conflicts in the basement and the trees, but additionally, I was seeking naturalized plantings to the rear of building B, and I don't believe those have been proposed.
I'll go to our landscaping plan, which is E C two point five. We do have a note, as you can see in the plan, and we were going to uh fellow with naturalized plantings.
Can you zoom in there on that note a little bit so everyone can see it?
Just for the record, this is eight point three on your letter. Beth, uh. Yes.
We had a twenty foot lawn area right by the building, and in the rest, we have a note that any unvegetated space spaces in this area to be filled with naturalized plants. And then we listed it, listed it there.
Okay.
But we can, we can modify it.
I would, yeah, I'd like to, just in full disclosure, I missed that note. I was looking for actual planting, so I I appreciate that. Um I would ask that this item, eight point three in my report, be a condition of approval, that that's something that we're able to work out as part of the resolution. And then I think everything else is just for the architect. Yes.
Good. All right, so.
Can I just have a quick question?
Yeah, yeah, that was cool.
Um I just want to clarify, when we're talking about the parking spaces, reserved versus assigned. The spaces inside the garage will be reserved for the tenants, but not assigned.
No, they will be assigned to individual units.
Okay, irrespective of whether that unit has an E V car or not.
Correct.
Any, okay.
And that's why we may need a little bit of overflow on the outside of the building. Wouldn't need it today, most likely. You see, I see where I'm going with this.
We're not gonna, I guess what I want to make sure is we're not gonna have a scenario where there are empty and unassigned spaces in the garage. That needs to be a full occupancy at all times. Well, um full allocation assignment at all times.
The applicant can agree to that, that it it just means that if they've got, you know, take building A, for example, where we're closing down, like, there's twelve E V S Es within the building for her. Once that thirteen car comes along, then then that person's just gonna have to have their, charge their car outside and then move it back inside or whatever.
So.
I think they're worried about the works.
We're worried, yes.
Yeah, alternative. Well, I mean, so in my, if you.
No, they'll they'll have an assigned spot inside the garage.
But if I drive if I drive a a conventional gas car today, and I'm I'm renting a unit in this space, and I'm in uh I'm in parking space number seventy five, and all of a sudden I buy an E V space, none of the garage E V spaces are available, so that means that my I can only park, I can only charge my vehicle in the outside surface parking. What happens to that?
That won't either, that won't. What we're gonna have, and I agree Karen, that we're gonna have to work this out in the resolution. But uh the only way I see it is that that person needs to charge their car outside.
Right.
Uh but that charging space is not their assigned space, if I'm hearing you correctly.
And and so does that mean that somebody, maybe somebody has a second car that they just park in the surface parking spaces? Does that mean that they would then gain an an assigned space in the garage?
I think we can, we can agree to that, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like we need to work language out that in that way, because we can't have all these folks that maybe gain E V, E V vehicles after moving in, now buying for parking spaces in the surface lots while having these empty conventional parking spaces in the garage. Do you know what I'm?
Yes, I understand.
This could be reassigned by way.
Right.
Yeah, I feel like they, I feel like this should be.
I could absolutely appreciate and understand what you're saying, and we're happy to to work with the board's attorney on crafting language to that effect. I think that no matter what, though, we're gonna be left in a position where we're trying to, we've got a certain, the spots can't easily be moved from actually, we were discussing this earlier, uh and apparently it's not terribly difficult to just add another E V S E space.
Well, that was, that was gonna be my question when I got to our question, but I'll, but we could address it. I mean, we could address it.
I think, yeah, and I think, I think I've made my point. We we need to find a way to make sure that there's jockeying or for jockeying, but the the sign, the spaces in the garage remain.
You don't want excess cars outside when there are are open spaces inside.
Exactly.
And then taking away potential visitor spots, but we're hearing from neighbors that one of the concerns uh of the folks in Hopewell is a parking, sort of a street parking question for visitors.
Right.
So that that's, that's the.
I mean, I think practically speaking, you know, and 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 this is uh we can't talk about economic uh things within it's not economic testimony or anything like that, but I think practically speaking, this building needs to be financially viable for the owner, and they need to rent it out to customers. And once there's enough enough customers that have electric vehicles, they're gonna have to add more spaces or else they're gonna be losing customers. So um you know, I think it's a balancing act moving forward over a relatively long period of time. Uh but like I said, you know, we understand your concern. Yep, can understand your concern, and we're happy to work with you. Uh I think it's gonna take a little bit of work in order to get the language right in the resolution. Um but I I I think that we can do it to the best of our ability today in two thousand twenty two. No, I don't think anyone can promise that it's gonna be functionally proper ten years from now, but we can't change that.
All right, Beth, this, all right, for Bob's.
Just one more. Um I forgot to mention it, but the sewer pumping stations you put in are required generation. And some, at some point, you may need to show us where your generator is gonna be located on the site.
Yes, if we continue to propose pumps, uh we will provide locations for generators.
And you may very well have it in the building as well for elevators or whatever else, but yeah.
Karen, did you have anything else? All right, so we are, uh time for questions from members of the board. I'm gonna go round the horn. If you, if you could do me a favor and just stop sharing. Uh that way I can see the remote folks a little bit easier. All right, uh so I see our remote folks. When I go in person, we'll go down the row, so try to give any questions. Good for now. Tony, you got questions?
No, no.
Brian?
Uh, yes, I had some questions, I guess. It was relating to the the D E P approvals that you're getting. Just to summarize, you had to go separately for the D E P flood hazard permit and the, did you have to get separate wetlands permit? Is that correct?
Yeah, we we will need to, yes.
Okay, for what aspect?
Right now, it's gravel area back there in the wetlands. If we're gonna put naturalized plantings or vegetation back there, we'll need to get a wetland.
Do you know what type of wetland permit you would need?
I just don't know if it's up, no.
Okay, uh in in terms of the flood hazard approval that's needed. You were mentioning disturbance in the vegetation disturbance within the carrion zone. Is there any uh aspect of that flood per, the flood hazard permit for uh construction within the flood plain itself? And you have to, are there any design considerations to the building that relate to that flood hazard permit?
Not that I'm aware of.
You have to do a building elevation raising, finish first floor.
It's gonna require a a flood study to verify the flood elevation. We previously got the flood elevation from plans provided uh from the previous town engineer that had a flood elevation, but uh we need to verify that through flood studies.
Okay.
So if if the previous elevation is verified, then we won't have to change a building. Nothing will have to be changed.
Okay, so you're.
We may, we may start off with previously established flood elevation.
Okay, so your application, your flood hazard application would be now is based on the previous.
Yes.
Okay, subject to their D E P's review.
Correct.
All right, so uh let me uh let me get, let me get our online folks. Hannah, do you have anything? Hannah, do you have any questions? You're muted if you're talking.
Yeah, sorry. My only, I just had one curious question, um just about the E V spaces. Do you know uh I'm just curious about like what kind of charging stations you're gonna be providing in terms of like what level of charge? Because I know that.
I don't know the specific level. I I know we did provide details of the stations.
That's a good question.
Not sure if our detail gets into the exact charge of it, but uh I'm 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 looking at it right now there.
Okay, because that might be able to help a little bit too, like in terms of like how long a person would have to wait outside to charge, if you're able to get the maximum charge and that's not overnight, that might help the situation too.
Yeah, our detail doesn't specify that exactly, so I don't have that answer right now.
Okay, okay. That was my only question.
Uh Jim, do you have anything?
There, okay. Um in listening to the question about the flood plain area, I believe D E P's in the process of, since I don't know a few other storms, uh possibly increasing areas that are gonna come forth on this, so it would pay to check into those regulations against against what was currently mapped.
Absolutely, and that the flood elevation has changed. Absolutely, and that the flood elevation has changed, uh, we're gonna discover that and we're gonna get all necessary approvals for the.
Okay, and, and I was glad to see that more, more of the charging areas are in the garage where a majority of your people are gonna be anyway. That'll be it.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Uh, Mayor, do you have anything?
No, I'll have some comments once it's all wrapped up concerning the lack of a redevelopment agreement. Thanks.
Okay, uh, we'll get there. Um.
So, yeah, on the EV's, uh, charging, I know it's meant for, as a transition when more people have electric vehicles, but there's not a regulation that if I have a gas car, I can still park it in EV spot, correct?
Provided it's private. That's why I'm just confirming that right now. If it's a public EV spot, then that car can be towed. I believe, however, from a private perspective, there's the ability to allow other cars to park there, although maybe not necessarily practical.
Okay, okay. That's it.
I don't have any questions. I only have comments.
Okay, well, we're, we're not up to that yet, so we're, all right.
No, that's why I didn't understand why you.
Just, just any questions? No, just any questions, sorry, questions. Um, and, uh, yeah, I don't have any other questions that haven't been addressed by everybody else. So, um, we are, um, we will entertain questions from members of public for the testimony given both, I guess, the prior, prior meeting and as well as this evening by the applicant's engineer. Um, so is there anybody a tenant who wishes to speak? You can stand and identify yourself with the record. You come up to the microphone. I'm not sure, we're just getting everybody here. Okay, is there anybody, uh, uh, on Zoom who wishes to ask a question? Click on raise hand and, uh, we will recognize you to ask a question. Okay, seeing none, uh, we will, uh, thank you for your testimony and you've got your next witness.
Yes.
The board usually takes a break at around nine. It is eight thirty-five, so we can certainly, uh, we'll take a break when we get there, so just giving you.
Thank you, Mr. Lo. Chairman, as you recall, the applicant's architect is Jose Carvillo from JCA Architecture. And, uh, he was previously sworn in and licensed, so we will get right to it. I guess the, the background is, um, you know, the full background is when we originally, the building was originally designed to have a sixty-foot, uh, tower, uh, which we thought was compliant with the redevelopment plan. Um, when we submitted the plans, you know, found out that it was not compliant with the plan and it required C variants, uh, which this board, uh, cannot grant, uh, when you're submitting pursuant to a redevelopment plan. Uh, so we lowered the height of the tower to be fifty feet. Um, and then we came to the first meeting that we presented at, and, uh, some members of the board, uh, indicated that they were disappointed that the tower was reduced, uh, in height, so therefore we have submitted, uh, new plans, uh, raising the tower to the maximum height that we can have, uh, with relief, uh, for C variants. Um, so we are now requesting a C variants for the height of the tower. Um, and we also have a planner, uh, John Barry, that can provide planning testimony. Uh, with that said, we are recalling Jose Carvillo, uh, just to provide basic testimony on the call.
So you're, you're all sworn in, you're all good. Are you?
Great, has.
I'm still under oath, right?
You're still under oath. Something just cracked out somewhere on that screen.
Do we need to mark the revised architectural drawings?
You know, uh, it's submitted, so.
Was this marked? Did we mark the other one as well?
So, um, does this lot, uh, has access to the internet?
Yes, it ought to because it's on Zoom, so. So you should be able to open a browser and pull, or whatever, pull something down and then, uh, we can show that screen as.
Alright, so we're gonna mark the revised architectural drawings. We'll just identify the name and date as eight ten.
It's all Bob to hold his hand on the.
It's all good. It's all good now. It just, we did a screen re-spread, it's not, got me a little nervous.
I'm sorry, I, I know the drawings are uploaded on the website.
Okay, I found it today and. Interesting break. We can, we can take our break now and let you get set for that if anyone objected. We took our break.
They're right here.
Totally.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a break. Sorry, I mean, it's okay, we're all figuring out this hybrid setup.
There you go.
Excellent, thank you.
I apologize for the delay. Not a problem, yes, we only got a break anyway. So one of the, uh, the comments that we had at the last meeting, uh, was the tower itself. Um, and basically of the two buildings, uh, we originally had submitted.
Can we just get the description of what, or the name of that and then the date?
Oh, sorry, yes, this is. So this is. So this is a, um, it's a comparative study, uh, of the towers. For the last submission that we made, which, uh, included, uh, a tower with no variance to now, uh, three one with a C variance. Uh, the joint's date is three thirty-one twenty-two.
Is, I'm sorry, is this a revision of A two oh two?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it's.
Well, actually, no, this, this is a new, this is a new submission.
Okay, then is there a drawing number with that submission, which is where Cara is going? Sorry, it's definitely your toes, Cara.
Thank you.
There you go.
We call it A two oh two.
It's, well, see, we already have an A two oh two submitted.
So.
So this is a A two oh two revision of, of today's date.
A two oh two, well, it's three thirty-one.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. Okay, got it.
No revision date, that's just the initial and, and date.
Right.
Perfect.
So. So at the original. Uh, originally we had submitted a building that, two buildings, actually, that had towers, and the towers are about sixty, sixty-five feet. Uh, understanding that, that, uh, made it a B variance, and we have the, for the, of this board, uh, we decided to, at that point, eliminate, uh, the variance and you can see here, um, again. So, same, you can see here, uh, building A, which is the total of the two buildings, uh, and you can see the tower on the corner, and basically that tower, uh, doesn't have a variance, but it's not a tower. There, that element, uh, of a tower, we've got lost, uh, with that, um, by lowering the height. On the right side, and this is still, uh, building A, uh, this is now the building with the tower element, um, being increased by four feet, uh, eleven inches. In, in other words, less than ten percent of the height, so we still have a C variance and it's still uh, on the, per year's board. Uh, this is what it looks like. Again, it's not, uh, the sixty-five foot tower that we had originally intended to be, just wanted it to be a beacon, wanted it to be something that could be seen from far away, uh, but it does, um, it, it, it actually does, uh, show a tower element more than what this would do. Both of them.
And that new height calculation is?
And then the new height calculation is fifty-four feet eleven inches. And, and that is show, um, uh, the C variance option, which is called, uh, uh, number three, uh, and so the way to the right, uh, as the, as the building height.
Right, thank you.
No, so, so thi- this is basically what we've done for this hour. Uh, again, understanding that it's not the, uh, you know, the towers that, I, I think you'll like and will appreciate it from the first, um, it's a little, but, but it does represent a total element to the building, which could actually be called a tower. So that's what's happening with building A. Building B, this is no variance, and of course this building is shorter in height than building A, so when you go to the, the tower. This tower does project itself a little bit taller, uh, than tower building A would be. Um, so this one represents more of a power element than the other one. Uh, again, the towers that were compared, you know, like towers are nearly quite C variance. Uh, and, you know, this is, at least this is what we like to, uh, just to get that tower element, the beacon that we're looking for, uh, on this project.
I'm sorry, did you say what the title of the B was?
Uh, it's fifty-four, uh, it's the same thing.
Oh, the same as A, I'm sorry, I missed that.
It is the same thing. Yeah, it just, it just because it's a shorter building does, uh, you know, we call more of a power element than the other one.
Is there any other testimony for you?
Uh, no, just clean up some questions that came up, uh, with prior, uh, with this. Um, there is a comment about full drains. Um, can you just confirm?
Yes, we do have full drains. Uh, I thought this would be something that we're doing the CD portion of the drawings, uh, but yes, we will have trains of both, uh, buildings on that lower level.
But then the engineers are gonna need to show where they're discharging to.
Absolutely, they'll, they'll be connected to the water management system.
Uh, there's also a comment in the engineering letter about access, uh.
So, so we do have a, um, an accessible path through the building, uh, that was actually improved by, uh, the sidewalks from, uh, you know, the actual main sidewalks on the street. Uh, we do have those walkways from the, uh, accessible spaces into the building. Those doors are actually, uh, you know, flush or even with the, uh, the floor outside, so we don't have, uh, any difference in, in level. So there's, there's a accessible pass to the, the building of those buildings. Uh, we're talking, I think, about similar points, uh, uh, on the building that are not part of that accessible path. Those are exit circles. Exit circles do not have to be within the accessible path.
So where the six-foot sidewalk comes up to the, I mean, accessible path into the building and the door swings out, that's still complying with the, uh, both the, the ADA standards?
Absolutely does. We, we have to make it comply.
I'm misunderstood. My, my question is, does it comply?
It does comply.
Okay.
Uh, thanks. Uh, the last question is, there were some, uh, Mr. Clark was looking for clarification on what the fire marshal was looking for. Uh, again, this is hearsay because it was a conversation, but.
Oh, absolutely. I, I did have a couple of conversations with, uh, Mr. McCormick, uh, and the, the first letter, uh, was a long letter, because the, the main, the main point of contention with him was the access to that parking lot at the back. Uh, we, since we moved the parking lot, uh, and when I wrote that out to him, um, you know, he wrote a letter that still contains some points, but those points were basically what we call like in safety, which is the points that actually go to the, uh, building go. And in discussions with him, this is something that obviously, again, uh, you know, just like accessibility, you have to incorporate into the drawings, where is that something that actually affects and, or doesn't change the building? Uh, it, it is basically, uh, it is part of the safety, um, issues that we have to comply with. Right?
So I'm just going for the record, since we're referencing these letters, uh, let's mark as, um, PB six, the original letter of the, uh, fire marshal, it's dated July twelfth, twenty twenty-one. And then PB seven, we'll mark the February eighth letter from the fire marshal. It's dated February eighth, twenty twenty-two. And you have already marked the third letter from the fire marshal that was marked from A seven. Um, so we can leave it that way.
Right, and, and I believe that last letter is the one that says that it's okay for, uh, and, and apply all those, um, items, uh, that, that we discussed into the plans.
So what it says, just for the record, it says, "The meeting addressed open items of concern on my past plan review letters." "We address all of the concerns and I am satisfied that everything that is on our current list of concerns can be addressed further if needed during the permitting and construction phase of the project."
And, and just for the record, I will be leaving with him personally, just to go over those items to make sure that they are actually contained within the drawings.
That's all I have.
Okay, so any further questions from our professionals for the additional heads like the architect? Beth, you're good?
No questions.
Bob, you're good? All right, I don't think there's anything that impacts traffic, but I'll just make sure. Uh, John, you're good? I'm gonna take that as a yes.
Yep.
Uh, good, all right. Um, members of the board have, uh, questions for the architects? Just, Beth.
I just wanna confirm the, uh, fifty-four foot eleven inch uh, height that you're proposing for building A is taken from the Walter Faran elevation. So it's starting from, it's basically sitting in the hole, starting from the lower, from the lower elevation on the site?
No, it's actually taken from grade plane. It's the average grade, uh, and that's what you do when you have a sloping site like this. You're taking from the average grade. Uh, and goes to the, the rules have a, a simple slope and just the mean of the midpoint of that slope.
Okay, so, but you're proposing the same height tower on B, which is also proposed at fifty-four eleven. So basically both towers are the same height on both building A and building B.
Both towers are at the same height. It doesn't mean that they're at the same level, but they're the same height.
Yeah, that's where I'm having trouble, um, trying to visualize that on the site.
Well, that's, that's, and that's the reason why the two towers are. If, if you look at the two towers, the one, um, uh, on the right, which is, um, if the tall one, it just doesn't come up as much, while the other one comes up a little bit more. But the two towers from the average grade, so, um.
Okay, can I ask the, the point of the towers, you, you got that inspiration from the redevelopment plan description encouraging a? Encouraging some sort of uh focal point at that corner. Do you believe that the building B needs the sim- a same, a similar focal point?
I I I think it does. Uh it's not just because of the visual impact from Main Street, uh but also as. The the two buildings are bouquets, you know, with the same type of design. So so we feel that the tower at one of the corners, that could be a, an element that would help define the building.
Do you think that the height of the tower on building B perhaps competes with the. Height of the residential and light commercial buildings across the street uh uh from Hopewell Avenue?
When you say compete, what?
Competing, it's it's tall compared to the buildings that are across the street of, you know, the same Hopewell.
It 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 is tall. I mean, my impression when what we left you at times that we wanted those towers to actually come up. Do I have a problem with lowering tower B? No, I just don't have a problem with that.
I'd like to see that. Um the, I think that that, I think you got your inspiration, like you you answered this question from the redevelopment plan recommendation. That there be some sort of anchor at that corner of Ferran and and Main. I think the tower on building B is one step too far and might compete too much. But that's a, that's not a form of a question, so keep going, sir.
No, no, I I absolutely, I I know, I think it's a question, but the question mark, you have that, not a problem.
Well, I started out as a question.
You're fine. I really noticed the intonation, so I.
Yeah. Thank you.
But I just wanna make, can I just clarify something?
Yes.
Um so, what I hear you saying is that it's a focal point. What I hear you saying is that it's competing, why is it competing? I'm trying to understand what what was competing.
I was involved with the writing of the redevelopment plan for this area, and the goal of that redevelopment plan committee was to um anchor the. The corner of uh, you know, as as an entry into the, a main entry into the town, um that corner of Ferran and Main. Um we thought a focal point architecturally, and that's all that was described essentially in the in the um redevelopment plan. Would be beneficial, and therefore we encourage some sort of architectural element there. My thought is the similar architectural element, um although. Understanding that's the entrance to building B, so you want to define it in some way, but perhaps not as tall, because. The elevation of the entire site slopes significantly from Hopewell down to Walter Ferran, so the. Tower on the building A site is um kind of.
It sits low.
Involve, and and you know, it 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 sits lower, so it's it's kind of encapsulated by that significant hill. And the elevations of the buildings across the street from Hopewell aren't feeling like there's something falling on them. Whereas the building B, that 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 location of that. Tower, and I hate to call it that, because it's really a more of an architectural element than a tower, um. Is a little more in your face if you've got residential and light industrial along that road. And frankly, that wasn't necessarily the intention of the redevelopment committee to put a tower in both locations. Highlighting it as a, in in, you know, popping it up a little on building B is fine, but have, but. We don't want to encroach upon the residence and in light industrial of Hopewell.
So my only concern with that?
Yeah.
I I hear what you're saying. But also, we wanna make sure that it doesn't look like it it it's disjointed, right?
Right.
And so, and so with that said, so I, and I understand where where this is going. But visually, if I'm if I'm coming down and it's supposed to be a focal point, I want the entire thing to be a focal point, right? You can't have just one building be a focal point. It needs to be the structure that's gonna be the focal point. So so hold on, hold on, I just, my 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 comment. So my point of it is, is that what what what. What I see, and I could be off, but what I see, and and maybe it's not the entire height of that. But I wanna make sure it doesn't come down so much that it's taken away from the symmetry and the. Yeah, I mean, there there's that to play with as well, and that concerns me, because you can go into towns and. This looks like this, and it just kind of looks unbalanced, and so it becomes a joke, right?
So I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the architect to. What do you think about that concern addressed by Mr. Parker? We're just gonna make it a question. Cause we're the question.
That's the right information, yeah. So, I personally, I don't have a problem with having a second tower, second tower element, let's just call it on building B. Um I I do get the point that that's more um, you know, further down from uh the corner that's supposed to be like the real element. Um if you notice where I have uh my cursor. Uh that is probably about halfway point between what we um, what I did and. Let's say what it could be, and at that point, I don't need a variance. If I do lower that four eleven, I won't need a variance for that uh that building. It will still have a tower. Uh if you look at the way, you know, this tower looks, has the long. You know, narrow windows, and it just extends itself a little bit more. I think we we still get that feeling, uh you know, as Mr. Everett said. Lowering it a little bit, um and you know, this building being a little shorter, uh I think it would still work uh as a tower.
As an architectural element, let's post that.
As as an, as as an element um to just designate a point on the building, so that you see the two. You know, sister elements, uh one may be tall, the other one may be small, but you see the two sister elements, the two that will be, will have the same architectural treatment.
So if we're we're we're, this is the, this is my question, and we're we're this to be lower than a few feet on building B and not. Exceed the permitted height and not need the C variance, you're still gonna need a C variance for building A, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I understand, like, there there's no, there's no way to do this without the C variance on building A at all.
If if you wanna have that element, that that elongated element, so that it provides a full.
Okay, yep, understood, okay. And one one quick clarification, how, from what was originally submitted to what's now, how many total feet were each architectural element raised?
From, no, no, from the original one that we submitted, we actually loaded.
Right, but the one that did not require a variance?
The one that was presented at the board last time, correct?
Four forty nine, which is four forty nine, which is less than ten percent of the height of the building.
Because if it's less than ten percent, it's C variance, and if it's more than that, it's D variance, and then allowed sort of in terms of the redevelopment. That's why we're having this whole conversation, yeah. Okay. Other questions for the architect?
So you're proposing to lower it how much? I I this, I I'm still not getting this, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I I propose, I I propose it to lower it about this much, about five feet, forty nine.
Only on building B?
Yes, right, only on the one building.
All right.
And and let me clarify, because I think Tony doesn't understand, he and I actually agreed. Do you feel it it's important to have a, some sort of uh significant uh architectural element on building B to define it as bouquets?
Yeah, you you do need something that resembles what's on the other side.
That's the, that's the answer I'm looking for is yes. And I don't disagree. I just think it should be what you proposed.
No, and 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 I I I agree with you. I I I think maybe since it is, you know, further away from that corner, that it, you know, even lowering it. To a no variance height, uh that it still will work, not as the view that we're looking at from Main Street, but. You know, there's a connection between the two buildings.
Perfect, thank you.
Other questions from members of the board for the architect? Is there any, if there's um, if there's somebody on Zoom with a question, I'm just looking to see. Hannah, go ahead. Thank you for raising your hand and.
Um, my, so this is just a random, I know we had that great discussion. This is a random question that I had, and it may not. I I I think you can answer it as the architect, but you may not be able to. Is there any kind of, will there be any intention to have any kind of video surveillance outside?
Uh we we probably uh have some, uh I mean, it's.
No, I'm sorry, this was just, it just popped into my head right now, and it might might have been a better question for the engineers.
Uh and it's more for, you know, the the control of uh the exterior, not necessarily for playgrounds or anybody like that, it's just so that. They they have an eye on the street.
Right, okay, that was my, that was my question.
Other members of the board remotely, click on raise hand. No one else, all right, um. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, this is a follow-up question to. Uh Bob, Jose, do you have um a a floor plan that you could pull up with that area by the uh the vestibule? That um Bob is concerned with 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 the six feet?
Sure.
Uh sidewalk, the ADA question, yeah.
Let me go back to. If you if you wouldn't mind getting, stop sharing right now, and you share it. Or, yeah, and if I find it, then you can reshare. It'd be a little bit easier. Let me, it's okay, because I wanna, let's get to all of our questions here, members of public, get to this with us, and then we'll take a break.
Because it's just connected to Bob's question, I want to. Bob, the the location is on building A or B that you're concerned with?
For any, actually.
Oh. Yeah, okay.
But this is submitted, said, this is, just use scroll down to the bottom, just so we can, for the record, get the, which drawing it is.
Sure.
Or which sheet I should say.
This is A one oh one.
Then she, this is A one oh one, previously submitted, sheet two of eight.
Right.
Okay, good, just, just making the tires life easier.
Could you zoom up on that vestibule by the sidewalk?
So. So this is like an A, and this uh this was a little submission, so it hasn't been. It hasn't been updated as per the engineer's drawings, but if you follow my cursor, this sidewalk is now a six-foot sidewalk. It's coming around here, it's doing this. So here we find the uh parking spaces, the accessible parking spaces. And we're gonna have a door in here that will allow that to come in. So from that point of view, this is the accessible point. Um for the accessible path uh through the building, then you get into the elevator, just both of the floors. Uh but but this, the handicap spaces are actually able to come into uh the lobby from that side.
Okay, I think I now see why Bob was concerned. Bob, are you concerned because the outside, those outside double doors. Are basically blocking that. One-foot sidewalk out there?
Why would you?
Where's thirty-three parking spaces, that double doors?
Yeah, they they need the six-foot wide parking sidewalk, excuse me, to a but the eighteen-foot space, that's that's the ADA.
I realize that.
And and on the pa- on the pa- I was asking the question, because on the pathway end, there's the access door that's. Blocking or going out into that, that was my question, is that, is that an ADA, having that door swing out into the six-foot sidewalk? I don't know if it's a three-foot door, if I don't know what it is.
Um, so so that that's a double door?
That's weird, that's the one I'm saying is weird.
Well, yeah, I I I, yeah, I was questioning this too, but now.
That's what you're questioning, right?
Now I'm understanding that that's not the access, and the access in is.
I didn't realize that either.
Yeah, but I was questioning this one over here. Can can you have a door swing out into a ADA compliant side? That that was the question.
So.
I was of the impression you couldn't, but if you say you can.
Yeah, no, you you can, it's a fire exit, uh so you can, you can go outside from from that into any space. So yeah, that's that's.
Yeah, but if somebody's walking by, they're gonna get slammed by a fire door.
Well, if there's a fire, you go now.
Yeah.
Is that, is that a stairwell, that's a stairwell?
It's a stairwell.
That's a stairwell, there's one that side and another one on the other side, I mean.
There's no way you can, you can pull that in?
We'll we'll give it a shot.
Yeah, I guess my, it it's very similar, the the where the double doors are is similar, so I'm, none of these are questions, but.
Yeah, but that 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 in itself is not an accessible entrance. That that's just a.
I realize that.
Right.
But not everybody that needs an ADA accessible entrance is parking at that ADA accessible. You know, ADA accessible parking spots are to serve of of, you know, a a someone that has an ADA sticker. There are other people that need the ADA access that are still parking in a regular parking spot.
Okay.
And so I I'm I'm questioning whether that that those double out door, outside doors are really. ADA accessible, if there's no three-foot clearance on the other side of those doors. I mean, where's the curb there? Is that a curb, is a drop curb?
There there will be a drop curb here somewhere, but opening one of those doors actually allows for the other side to have a full. Accessible entrance, if you if you look at it, right? So you open one door at a time to do that. Uh the other thing is, a person who needs actually a wheelchair, would need to do that, they could be dropped off at this point, and they could come in here. And then going through the building.
Your question is not just about a wheelchair, the question is, mom or dad pushing a stroller, they're not placarded car, they're not gonna spa- park in one of the. Reserved spaces, they're gonna park in a visitor spot just across the way, but they still need a width that is bigger than um. Just walking down the street.
We'll move the door, we'll move the door.
Yeah, you need a three-foot clearance outside the door, or else you're walking on the sidewalk, and you're literally walking over the curb to get on back onto the curb.
Yeah, we'll we'll move that, that's all.
Thank you, perfect. And make sure you check all of the accesses, all on both buildings.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Bob, does that help?
Uh, yeah, I just, I I remember this coming up in another location, and. After the site plan was approved, there was this whole big issue with the, to the construction official. About the way the door was set up, and it wasn't compliant, and they had a jury rigor.
Yeah, I again, I.
And so let's get into this now, it's outside, rather than on the lower.
I hate the comment, I don't think it was addressed before, thank you.
We'll pull it back and then get six, right?
Thanks for answering.
It's about five feet now, so we pull it back.
Perfect, thank you. That's my only two questions.
Other members of the board with, for the architect? Okay, members of the public with questions for the architect and the testimony given. Seeing no physical or virtual hands raised, um we're good, testimony of the architect?
Yes, we're good with testimony of the architect, I'm assuming that was a break time?
Now would be a break, um you're calling a planner, is the?
Yeah, I'm calling a planner, you know, since we have uh the variance, um you know, I think it's appropriate that we put.
All right, so so here's what I'm gonna ask, let's take our break now, it is uh eleven after, let's take ten minutes. We'll come back in in uh twenty-one after, if you're witness could spend a couple of minutes of that break, get whatever needs to be pulled up on there. If there's no exhibits, then we're good. All right, I'm gonna pause the recording. I'm resuming the recording, it is eight, nine twenty-one PM, we're gonna come back into order, I think if you could please call the roll again, just to make sure.
Sure, Mayor Driver?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Dachshund?
Here.
Mrs. Amel?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Budney?
Here.
Ms. Whitefin?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
I didn't see Jim come back.
Mr. Levin?
Here.
Ms. Kaczynski?
Here.
Mr. Clarico?
Here.
Mrs. McManus?
Here.
And Mr. Red?
Yeah.
And uh we will check in uh.
I'll I'll let you know when uh Mr. Hill gets back.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna continue, please.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh so like I said, you know, we have uh now one C variance and a few waivers and exceptions. So we thought it was appropriate to put some planning testimony on the record. Uh the applicant's planner is John Barry. First, uh do you wanna swear him in?
Yep.
Please.
Raise your hand, just for the testimony, I'd like to give this board the truth, the whole truth, nothing much.
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Barry, can you please? Thank you, Mr. Barry, can you please provide the board with the benefit of your licenses and experience?
Spell your name first for the record, just to have.
Uh John J O E Dunn, last name Barry, B A R R E E. And I am with from hired role and associates or at two thirty-six Broad Street in Red Bank in Jersey. And I'm a licensed professional planner, member of the American Certified Planners, I have a master's degree in planning from Rutgers University. Qualified as an actor for number of boards over the last few years. And I also represent probably five or six boards uh currently and done variety of planning projects throughout the state.
Any objections to qualifying you? As a planner, alright.
Thank you.
Go, are you?
So. I'll uh give a brief summary and uh and just move into some testimony regarding the the variants we're seeking tonight and the the design waivers before the board. So as you're well aware of the project, the orientation, so I'm not gonna belabor that point, but. The the site's located within the Little Live Way redevelopment plan, which was amended in twenty twenty, really um this project kind of fits nicely in and love with with the amended version of the plan. All of the plan's objectives and the way that the design of the project has come together, um in my opinion, looking at all of this. Really, um the the proposal before you satisfies the the objective of the plan to provide for for those economic goals and satisfying some of the regional market forces. Maintaining character, quality of life within the borough. Providing for diverse housing forms with affordable units, but for some residential within walking distance of downtown to help promote Main Street revitalization. Uh ensuring that there's architectural compatibility with some of the historic character you see elsewhere within Flemington. Maintaining um you know, the sense of place with the design features, that's really why I'm here this evening and and why we're having a lot of these conversations is to make sure that. Those design elements are are tailored the way that that the borough would like to see them. Incorporating a gateway feature as in single heart. Stated, you know, really looking at that corner of of North Main Street and Ferran Boulevard. And making sure that we incorporate um variety of environmental sensitive and green features throughout the the project to the to the extent that we're capable. Permitted uses in the plan, allow for mixed residential and a few useful uses, things like that. Our multifamily proposal is consistent and permitted within the redevelopment plan. The permitted residential density of thirty units per acre is being meant, we're just under that with uh the proposal here, we're providing fifteen percent affordable housing set aside that's mandated in the redevelopment plan. And so the only real area where we have deviation, where we see deviation is with the tower height. Looking at uh tower height of fifty-four feet, eleven inches, the architectural feature at the at the corner of of the project. We've heard testimony from Mr. Gavio that the height on building B will will comply with with plan. So we're only seeking relief for the one architectural feature with building A, which is the corner of Ferran Boulevard and North Main Street. And really looking at the overall design, the the plan calls for some um. Looking at the architectural context of the borough and looking at some of the guidelines within the borough's historic preservation ordinance and and commission's guidelines. And in my opinion, as a planner, and you know, I think I think the architecture really fits into the um industrial and utilitarian style that's that's outlined in in those HPC guidelines. Got some of the the brick masonry that's being proposed as the as one of the main features along with stone accents. You've got the the large doors, the arches, those elements have a have an industrial feel, the window treatments certainly um have an have an industrial feel that you see not only in Flemington. But elsewhere all over the state in some old loft buildings that are. As to the C variants itself, you know, we've heard the history of the application, a little bit of back and forth in terms of. Getting to a height that both can be heard within the jurisdiction of the board and is acceptable to to the board members from a design perspective. Um but we, you know, we feel that the the height relief is in the overall scheme of things um. A a benefit to the project really, because it's bringing that gateway feature that's desired. Overall, the uh doesn't detract from the area in any way. The overall design of the the development is consistent with those redevelopment plan objectives and it advances several purposes of zoning. Don't usually kick off this part of the spiel with purpose I, but I think that's really why we're here in terms of promoting a desirable visual environment. And the project is seeking to do just that in both within the confines of redevelopment plan and the the borough's historic guidelines. Also advances generally, the project advances purpose A, promoting the health, safety and general welfare. Providing redevelopment of a site that's been begging for a while now, um is current stage is. And helping to promote and continue revitalization efforts that are that are going on in the borough, which is certainly for the benefit of everyone in town. Also provision of affordable units help uh. Help with the with general welfare. Purpose E is also advanced and through promoting establishment for appropriate population densities and concentrations. Again, that's uh looking at some populations coming to town within walking distance of downtown, within walking distance of of destinations, which is a. A goal that's reiterated in the redevelopment plan, so this location complies with the permitted density and helps serve as both a gateway and something of an anchor at the at the end of of Main Street. Overall, there's really no negative detriments, uh no detriments to speak of as far as the negative criteria goes. The height that's exceeding the limits to really being these companies being concentrated away from the neighboring properties. Appropriate corner of the. It's opposite the. That's also slated for some future redevelopments, those the bookends and helping to create that gateway, so um. Um in in terms of impacts on the neighbors, I think the suggested change of bringing down back to conformance, the the rear building helps uh maybe any kind of impacts on the neighborhood residential properties. So uh we also have, listen to the the designing sections. We have a. Size exception that was discussed with regard to the the curb radius. Uh something of a technical engineering issue, we heard um from from Mr. Ray that he had no objection to that from a from a traffic safety standpoint. So from planning perspective, I I see that as a de minimis issue that um certainly doesn't have any negative impact on the project. We have the the one compact space within the garage, eight foot width, where nine feet is required. Um we've had um. The commitment to turning template would be provided to to demonstrate movements around that space. The small de minimis section, I think with the um. Commitment to to assign parking spaces, to manage the parking garage, that I think that it would be an investment to support tenants and the the applicant manager of building to make sure that anyone who's in. Parking in that parking space has a vehicle that's not oversized, so um I think, you know, to the extent that that needs to be a commitment, I think that that's something that makes sense and would alleviate any practical concerns. Um we have a de minimis uh issue with the drive aisle with at one point within the within building A. There's some, it's the same location as the uh the compact space, the architecture will stick out. A couple of feet further into the drive aisles, there's one choke point that's twenty feet wide instead of twenty-four feet wide. And uh I believe the same turning template will show that the maneuvering through that one space can be accommodated. Again, low traffic points within the garage and folks who are familiar with it, access control and assigned parking. And then lastly, we have uh lighting design waiver, I believe, and this McManus can correct if I'm wrong. I believe the issue is with the maximum level of foot candles called tax pedestrian sidewalks. The lighting level's been brought down from the previous submission to attempt to address any of these issues. We're at two point over five foot candles, where two foot candles is the maximum permitted in a couple of locations or in one location. So um you know, a very minor deviation that um in the grand scheme of the lighting plan, we're trying to make sure that there's adequate pedestrian safety throughout the site. And um that point oh five in exception will not have any negative impacts. So just to wrap things up, certainly the the redevelopment plan self was was drafted and. Brought about in consideration of the borough's master plan, the uh project here complies in virtually every respect with that redevelopment plan. With um many of the provisions in the master plan. The relief we're seeking here is to make a better project essentially and uh try to satisfy some of the desires that have been expressed. And I see no negative impacts associated with what we're seeking to see.
Thank you. That. Questions?
Um I have no questions on that, no, no.
Uh do you have any questions for the planner? John, do you have any questions for the planner?
I'm sorry.
For the board again, Trent, I'm good, Tony.
I'm good, yeah.
Yeah, I do, um you're allowed to, it's okay.
Sure, uh in your discussion, I guess about some of the design, maybe this may have been a question for the architect, you were talking about how the. The the design of the project was, you know, meant to, I guess, complement some um. Yeah, other areas around Flemington, could you give other examples of either current or prior development that is in town that would complement this the the design that's shown here?
Sure, the um. The industrial style, the.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get, the industrial style.
Yeah, um I think, you know, in some some respects, the uh the Stengel pottery factory has a lot of these industrial elements. And the um dual bag auctions, I was called these days. Um you know, there's some different treatments to that building and it's a refurbished state, but um I'm kind of just in terms of material, a limited ornamentation that that's called for under that style. And flat refines and um kind of the. Invert windows, all of those elements are are being carried forward and, you know, homage here.
Yeah.
Hannah? Jim?
I'm sorry.
Mayor?
No questions. Actually, I changed my mind.
Um.
Yes. Yeah, it's curiosity, so you're here with this variance with the tower. Is there a reason you just didn't come back to amend the redevelopment plan?
Well, I I don't know that I can necessarily speak for the process, um you know, from a planning perspective, there's they're both potential avenues. I know that the the board had already taken jurisdiction to that and I was uh brought in to to give testimony this evening on that issue. Uh I don't I don't know that I can speak to it much beyond that.
Okay, thank you, I was just curious.
Alright, um. I don't have any questions either, so uh any members of the public with questions for the planner and testimony given? Alright, seeing none, um are there any other witnesses?
Uh no, no further witnesses.
Are you ready to finish your testimony? Is that my question?
Uh tonight we are finished with our testimony.
Okay, um so process-wise, um we could have discussion amongst the board's professionals, discussion amongst the board, discussion members of public, we. It's nine thirty, you know, we we've got at least another hour that we could be working tonight, but um if it's the applicant's desire, we could also continue this to the next meeting if there's additional. Information that you want to present in in response to testimony given tonight, I know there were some things in Mr. Clarico's letter and things like that.
I mean, I think I'd be looking for clarification as far as, um you know. Whether um. What exactly needs to be provided prior to the board voting of the things that Mr. Clarico went through? Uh I guess that's my question.
I think that we can't answer that question until we've had some discussion, because I think some of those answers will come about in discussion, you know what I'm saying?
I do. I do, I I'm just reluctant to close the public hearing before, I don't want to have to reopen it and do that.
Yeah, I'm here, yeah, I just think it would, I think some of their answers are gonna be. Clarified once we all start talking. And then the the then they'll be able to know what.
That's one, that's one of the questions.
What if we do it the opposite way? What if we ask the board and if they feel like there are any questions that they need answered in order to close the public portion?
Right, that's, okay.
So instead of closing the public, because you don't want to deliberate until we close the public portion.
Correct.
But yet you don't want to open the public portion, and if you deliberate and questions come up.
Right.
Then that's definitely that.
Right. Yeah. So then 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 let's let's let me uh.
Can we force ourselves to just keep asking questions? Like Jeopardy for a while, I mean, like, is that what you want us to do?
No, I'm just, I'm thinking, I'm trying to get to where you want to be.
Yeah.
Without.
I think I think it just will help them if they hear what we're thinking.
Okay, we've made, how about?
If if there are questions that we'll give that, I'm ready to deliberate and vote. I don't need to see anything that Bob is asking for if these were conditions of a resolution. However, but if there are questions that may guide the board to answers on some of these, but I don't see anything that's quite substantive that would change. How we would discuss it.
So Sean, how do you feel about reserving the right to present additional information to the board?
That's what I was gonna suggest is, um you know, I think from our perspective, I think that the things that remain outstanding on the engineering review letter are things that are usually um. Resolution compliance items, um and that's how we were approaching this, uh if something comes up, yes, we would like to reserve our rights to present testimony and further documents or plans if necessary. But, you know, unless someone tells us otherwise. As I sit here right now, right this minute, if there's something else that we need to provide. Um but again, you know, if there is something, of course, we do want to provide it, uh you know, this is the redevelopment process. Um you know, we've been working with the town for multiple years, we've been working with Mr. Clarico uh for for over a year now in this process. And the the redevelopment process in and of itself is a partnership between a developer and the town to develop property that the. That the township has, or the borough in this case, has deemed an area in need of redevelopment. Uh the benefits that we're providing through the redevelopment process. Allow the planning board and especially the redevelopment agency um uh and the council to have a hand in this process. Um so yes, I would just like to reserve our right to present further testimony, documents and plans.
So so here's here's what I'm doing, let me let me, let me if we just hold the board and see if, I don't know if that's, like, what else you need to hear.
I just have a question for Karen, and that is if we um close out public comment and start deliberating, does that mean that we have to write the resolution tonight? Cause I'm, cause I'm looking at the time and I just.
Well, that's where I'm, that's why.
That's why I'm concerned, I'm like. We're the five, sometimes when we get to, when we get to the point where it's really late and we're tired, I'm concerned that the reps, that stuff's gonna get lost in the shovel with resolution.
The the condition, we would have to vote on having a list of conditions and your concern that we that we don't necessarily have that list of conditions ready to go, right?
That might need to be finessed over the next two weeks, so we discuss tonight and then do the final resolution and then do the condition of the next week.
Okay, so the recommendation is on if and when there is a motion to approve this application, there would potentially be conditions that would be associated with that.
I'm just assuming.
I mean, you can also hold board and see what the board wants to do at this point.
Yeah, well, that's.
I mean, that's that's also another another option, but, yeah, um.
What are people, what are people saying?
But if there is conditions of approval, like, and and again, if Susan, if you're concerned about um the red in Bob's letter, uh which mostly are conditions of approval. I can't think of something this applicant would present to us that we have not already seen.
Okay, so so uh Jim, go ahead, I'm seeing Jim raise a hand.
Yeah, um I would, the my concern, I thought of everything that I've gotten here is. I would like their applicant's engineer to go to DEP and find out if there's been, are going to be any changes in that flood plain, because that area during Ida wasn't exactly dry. And I'm I'm just concerned about the uh access to the building and or do we have to do something about the elevations under the regulations that may change? We can get a sense of that, I'd feel safer.
We're getting an answer, Richard.
So the applicant is in the process of doing that, uh that requires a flood study, uh which the applicant has uh started commenced. Um the whole process is a four to six month process, most likely.
So is there any way that somebody can talk to DEP and see which way they're headed? I know they're revising their uh regulations again, so I'm just trying to stay ahead of the curve on that.
Right, so but if if the flood study were to come back, it would require redesign of height or position of anything. They'd be coming back for a an amended site plan regardless, right? I mean, like, that that's.
As long as that's a good condition, yes.
Well, I mean, that that would be, that's statute. I mean, like, that's.
Yeah.
I mean, that's any, you're you are approving tonight, or, you're back, right. You would be considering for approval the site plan that's been presented to this board. Whatever site plan that is approved is subject to change only for uh, field changes that were not anticipated and and that could fall within that definition. Um, otherwise, they have to come back here for a redevelop.
Mayor, do you want me to go ahead?
Uh, yes, Kara, I have done a question too along this lines. So, you know, the applicant's attorney says he's been working with the borough and all that. Fact is, is this applicant hasn't had any discussion with the borough and the Borough Council for well over a year. There is not a redevelopment agreement. We do not have a a pilot agreement in place for this property yet. They're availing themselves to the um, land use law with the redevelopment area. However, they have not satisfied two of those three things, and that's a huge concern of mine. And as I'm listening here to this application, many of the items being discussed could have been addressed as we negotiated that redevelopment agreement. We sent them a draft, they never sent it back. And yet they submitted a a site plan application. And and I have to tell you, this is a concern of mine as mayor and as a member of the governing body, that this is being now considered by this planning board without that redevelopment agreement in place. Because this redevelopment agreement will cover certain things that they're going to have to do before they can put a shovel in the ground. So I'm not quite sure exactly, you know, how that impacts this.
There were, there were trades in the redevelopment agreement quite a while ago. And then we were put on, I was put on hold. Uh, I did speak with my client last week and said, hey, you know, we still need to get this going again. And I was authorized to begin recommence work on the redevelopment agreement and supplement to, you know, the pilot, which is not.
Some of some of the issues, Sean, in that redevelopment agreement had to do with the design of the building and construction of the building. And and now those are being ignored by the fact that there's no redevelopment agreement in place. And yes, this will be a condition, I presume, that this board will vote on a condition that it has to have an executed redevelopment agreement, but I'm kind of concerned that we're putting the cart before the horse here.
So let me ask us a question of law then, are we, do we have jurisdiction to grant approvals without a signed redevelopment agreement?
You do, but having that as a condition would then obligate that as a uh, condition of resolution compliance. And if there is anything that would be changed that would affect the approval that we granted, they would have to come back with.
It's not a bad thing that this board can voice their opinion to the, if if that's a, I I would assume that would be a a requirement of any resolution we did, having a a approved redevelopment agreement with the with the borough. And it's not a bad thing that the council, who's the one who has to do that negotiation, knows in detail of what our concerns are as a planning board, considering that we do this more often than than them.
I'm I'm just.
Yeah, but Susan, it's not a matter of doing it more often, it's a jurisdictional thing. This is an area in need of redevelopment and the council has control over the site plan.
I understand that, I just know you appreciate our, I know you appreciate our opinions on this, all my points.
But aren't we voting on the the exactly that, like, we have nothing to do with redevelopment agreement. We have something to do with the redevelopment.
But 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 Mike, but, okay, but here's.
I don't want to get too into the weeds on.
No, but 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 I'm asking, is it, the other question I'm asking is, uh, this is the legal question. We are, we would be possibly granting some approvals possibly to the applicant who is not empowered to actually do the project until redevelopment agreement is signed. Like, I I just don't, I just, we've done, we've, I I just don't, it seems backwards. I mean, I that, but I understand that it may be legal, it just seems, it seems backwards that that you would have, you know, redevelopment plan, designated developer, signed redevelopment agreement, including pilot if that if that was part of the mechanism.
Yeah.
Site plan submission to the planning board, debate, review.
Why would a pilot have anything to do with it?
No, no, but I'm saying, you're saying, no, 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 I'm saying the order of the process often times this.
Oftentimes it is, but is it, is it required?
Legally, it's not. It just seems weird that it's not, that's all I.
In my experience, all towns have their own process. Some towns want to do it the way we proceeded this time. Other towns want to do it the way that the mayor is suggesting, um, just.
I don't think it does seem weird because then the council gets the benefit of knowing what our thoughts and opinions are, which is frankly, one of the weaknesses of the law.
But we're also going through this process with with someone who may not actually, like, what if something falls apart?
But what you're missing, what you guys, Susan, what you're missing here, so the redev, uh, uh, there should have been a redevelopment agreement with a site plan attached to it. So when the when the council approves the redevelopment agreement, it has the site plan. It doesn't have to be an approved site plan, but then you guys know exactly what you're getting. And they chose to kind of leapfrog over that step for whatever reason, and I don't know the reason that they did that because they haven't shared that with the borough. However, at this point, I mean, I'm personally going to have a tough time. I'm not going to say I'm going to vote. Um, but, you know, fact is, is they leapfrogged over that. There should have, there should be a redevelopment agreement that should have had a site plan attached to it before it was executed by the council before they came to the planning board. That's all.
So so here's.
I think we're gonna bring it.
We have to bring it back to this other thing. Yeah, okay, so.
I mean, the applicants here, the applicants hearing everything that we're discussing, I'm assuming is is going to be taking that.
Yes, of course. I mean, like I said, I I I reminded my client that we were put on hold, uh, I think it was last week. And I was authorized to, you know, push forward on it.
Yeah, but but Sean, nobody, nobody from the borough put you on hold. You guys chose to not return the draft.
I I can't, I can't argue that.
So we're gonna, so all right, so so I I hear, I hear where we're at, okay, so, um.
I can, I can say that I would appreciate some time to go through the conditions that we, I would want to put together um, for something like this based on what we've discussed. I don't think that's outside the norm, you know, from our end. I don't know if that's where, I do have lists here. Um, I know there's some things we need to craft. I know we were discussing with council that we would probably need to have some discussion about crafting EV ordinance uh, or the, I should say, the EV condition, um, so that, just some things for the board to consider when you decide how you want to.
All right, so then, so here's what I'm gonna suggest then. I'm gonna suggest that we move to close the public hearing, that we have discussion of the board and it's perfect, we hear any public comments, uh, I'm sorry, we hear any public comment on the application. Then we close the public hearing, um, then we have board discussion. I do not think we're going to get to vote with conditions this evening because it sounds like there needs to be some time, but I think that the benefit of that discussion that with the applicant reserving the right to present additional information, um, if need be. And then we, my my suggestion, if the board is 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 inclined to go it this way, is to get all the way up to the point of of, but not vote tonight, but actually do a vote at the next meeting uh, once we've had a time to kind of hear all the discussion and craft those conditions. Because I I, if that seems reasonable to folks, I'm not.
Yeah, I agree. Because it's, we just heard all the testimony, so it's all fresh in our minds now.
So I'm going to then move to, uh, we'll, then we'll go that way. So if any member of the public who wishes to speak your mind on, um, on the, on on the application, anyone in person or anyone else. Okay, seeing none, I'll adjourn the motion to close the public hearing.
So move, cook.
Second, Budney. Ellen?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Bedding?
Yes.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Joshna?
Yes.
Mrs. Zingrich?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're up for the point of discussion, so, um, do we need to swear in our, uh, did we already swear in our professionals? Kara?
Uh, I think we did. I think we swear to everybody who wanted it.
Yeah, okay, so we don't just let you do that now. All right, so, um, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask our professionals if there's, we kind of just went through all the review letters. Is there anything else that you want to add, um, at this point for, in terms of the board's discussion?
Also, from my point.
Nothing, nothing from John, I, uh, if you have anything you want to add?
I don't think I have any, anything to add, no new information. There are, we heard, uh, we did hear a summary of it from the applicant's planner, but there are uh, a number of items in the reexamination report, your 2015 reexamination report that are relevant to this application. And then additionally, there are, um, a number of objectives specific to redevelopment, just like in the redevelopment plan that I think are helpful for the board to, um, as you, as you do your deliberations tonight and potentially for the next meeting as well, just to sort of put the site and its redevelopment in context or rather in context with the vision for redevelopment of the borough and just generally for the vision of the borough. Um, I won't belabor things by going through these, although I'm happy to if the board asks, but just as a reminder that information is inherent, but other than that, um, I don't have any questions or new information to to bring to light.
Bob, do you have anything else you want to highlight?
Um, no, it it is, but we we heard how they're going to handle the stable access. It's gonna have to be exterior, it's gonna require DEP permit. And in event they can't get that, they're gonna have to come back with something, that's something you have to go back for.
All right, so, um, I'm gonna go around the horn, if folks want to weigh in. Jeff, we're short on time.
Well, I I just want to make sure that that I've I've got all my notes down because the 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 items that they need relief from.
Yeah.
Um, I have as the um, the C bearings on the height and only building A.
Correct.
I have de minimis design exceptions on the curb radius.
Yes, ten foot, yeah.
Um, I have a a small de minimis exception on a one compact car space.
Yes.
Right, that's three. I have something, again, I'm writing, I was writing, that's the choke point, a twenty foot wide choke point which could be, um, fixed with access control somewhere in the garage.
Well, their their argument is that it's standard is twenty four, they're providing twenty in one spot, and they're arguing that it's not a big deal because the, it's it's in the garage where people know the garage because it's controlled access.
But is that also a de minimis exception?
It is, it is.
Okay, and then.
And then they present to us the board.
And then last was the lighting design waiver on the sidewalk in 205 versus 200 that's allowed. It came down way down from where their original plan was, but now they're hovering that's slightly above my words, slightly above, uh, de minimis. And so those are the five, they're the, the labors, those are the five big items.
That's the relief that's being sought in addition to site plan approval. And I just want to remind everybody, because this is a redevelopment uh, area, we've done this a few times. We are judging the site plan against the redevelopment plan, not necessarily, uh, the areas in which the redevelopment plan is, speaks to and on our, or underlying ordinances in every places where the redevelopment plan is silent.
Right, except for the fact, not except, in addition to the fact that in our master plan, there are things that align with, the the goals within our master plan align with many of the things that they're building here, even though it's an area you need redevelopment. But we.
Well, that's 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 something for us to consider in terms of granting relief.
Yeah, it's like there's, there's sort of a layered approach here. What is the policy? And that's the policy as stated in your master plan, and that's sort of layered with the objectives, which are sort of the policy part of the redevelopment plan. And then the other side of, the other aspect of layering, if you will, is that we have our redevelopment plan which provides the the majority or the more important uh, design and bulk standards. And that's sort of layered with the borough code. And those items that, like, for example, with lighting, the redevelopment plan doesn't address uh, the type of lighting details that your ordinance does. Therefore, your ordinance lighting standards apply, which is why they need relief from the ordinance standard for lighting.
Because that wasn't part of the redevelopment.
Correct.
But as far as the redevelopment plan that we were given, I believe there was a a public presentation. I just want to make sure because I I I heard when the mayor was talking about, wow, it seemed like there were more things coming, more shoes to drop, that they wanted something else, but from our standpoint, we were presented with a redevelopment plan. Many, some of our our board members sat on that redevelopment plan, came up with a redevelopment plan with with your assistance. Now we're judging this application to that redevelopment plan irrespective of a pilot program, taxes, pay with any.
One of them, that's 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 counter to your suggestion.
Right, so this is just, this is like.
Your scope is more narrow.
Our scope is very narrow, redevelopment plan, public presentation thereof.
This public presentation.
This public presentation thereof.
Yeah.
So so with that in mind, I just wanted to make sure that I was coming at it from the right, from the right mindset. I mean, with that, I I feel like they've accomplished or or gotten to the point of where the redevelopment plan was guiding that, in my opinion. I mean, we didn't, I I didn't.
You're allowed to talk about opinions, huh?
Yeah, so I I mean, I I, you know, uh, you know, all all things aside, I do think, Brian, I heard your question on your, where does it match? But I think the redevelopment plan talked about this industrial nature. Whether or not we have a lot of industrial nature in town, the redevelopment plan talked about that. So I feel like that was accomplished. Things about the towers, I could have gone with both towers being tall, but that's fine. Um, uh, I think they'll look better taller, but I think at least on that corner, because that was part of the plan. So, I mean, all of that, I don't have anything that I can say, I wish that they did this to make it better. I think we've made it better all along, so.
All right. You want to jump in?
I'd like to take you back on the, the whole tower thing. I was not part of the original committee that wrote that redevelopment um, plan, but the the mayor was nice enough to appoint me later on in the process when the two members of that redevelopment plan moved on to other items for other reasons. Personally, I had, um, originally, um, encouraged the elevation height along Hope Well in in the redevelopment plan in general to be quite a bit higher than the original redevelopment committee approved. And I was kind of disappointed in that. When, um, when I got involved later on in the process, I did encourage a, you know, some sort of architectural element that defined that that corner a little uh, better. And that's where that that kind of higher element started coming in. Um, but it was really made clear through the public review process of the redevelopment plan when it was presented to the public that the 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 people along Hope Well were concerned about two things, parking and those elevations. So I wanted that to be something that was sensitive. The other thing that I remember, um, the uh, the public was concerned with was the the style, the architectural style, which Todd also mentioned. Um, and one of the things that it hasn't been mentioned, when we keep saying industrial and there's, you know, a couple of sites around town that are. The reason why the committee, the second committee, really focused on industrial was because of the history of that area being transportation, train, that kind of influence on the design. And I think that's where the applicant applicant got their, in some of their inspiration from. So I just want to kind of give some background because I was in on those kind of conversations behind the scenes. I hope, I hope that helps. I think this plan is essentially the same as what the, what I mean essentially the same, I mean, you know, the breakdown of the buildings, the massing, the amount of units, the same as what the redevelopment committee, meaning the later of the two redevelopment committees negotiated in our conversations behind the scenes, you know, with the with the, um, applicant. I am, you know, once that redevelopment plan was approved, I haven't been, you know, I I my my, sorry, my uh, involvement with the committee was not needed anymore, understandably, because then it gets moved to the council, um, to to, uh, and the council's attorney to negotiate that, you know, that redevelopment agreement. I'm not sure, I'm a little concerned how we got this far in the process from a planning board standpoint if the council and the mayor were really very concerned about this because we've had this on our agenda for a while. That I I didn't hear any, and I do apologize if I missed something, but I I didn't hear any concerns relieved from the council or the mayor to us that we had this on the agenda. But like I said before, I don't think it's a bad thing that we, as the planning board, can express our um, suggestions and opinions to the council and whether they, whether they, whether they incorporate this approval into their. this approval into their uh redevelopment agreement, or whether they don't, if they don't come up with a redevelopment agreement, if they can't come up with a a negotiation, then all of this work we did doesn't mean anything, and that's okay. I mean, that's called paper architecture in in my in my industry. Um, that happens a lot, where we go through meetings after meetings after meetings and projects get approved and then they never happen. That's okay, but at least the council knows where we stand on some of these very detailed things. And I really do hope this project goes through. I think, like I said, I think that it is very uh that it's essentially the same as what the redevelopment committee had in mind, both of them. Um, but frankly, that's not our concern when our vote tonight, our concern is, as Todd said, does this proposal is it in line with the approved redevelopment plan? And it's a it's essentially a yes or no answer for us, and it has been for every other redevelopment area. Um, so I'm I'm kinda happy that we get to kind of incorporate that stuff into the um it, you know, in into the the councils kind of going forward with the with the redevelopment agreement. Um, I've got I've got five very specific things, do you want me to go on or do you wanna come back? Cause I I cause I I think people wanna kind of talk about this general stuff first, no?
Sure, but we can get into it, I mean.
I I I'm not certainly trying to curtail anybody speaking about what their concerns are, but I think the more that we start tying these two issues together and saying that it's not something we can consider, we're making it something that we are considering. So.
Okay, so you just want me to go through the technical stuff now?
Go through it.
Okay. Uh, okay, the EVs, we talked about that right at the beginning of the process, and the comments that the fire marshal made concern me, because it it kind of perpetuates the false narrative that EVs are somehow a fire hazard, and I really wanna make sure that we don't, and I think everybody's on the same page that if it allowed in parking garages and 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 raised, in this case, a raised building, not so much a parking garage. Um, and I just wanna kind of stress that in general. Um, I think what Beth had commented on in that whole discussion we had about um, the concern about the assigned spots, and I and obviously as the manager and owner of the buildings, that's something they're gonna have to deal with. But I think what a simple solution might be is to be putting hourly limits on those public surface spaces for charging areas, depending on whether you're doing, uh, I think it's a class two or a class three, you know, class two will take like two hours for a a decent charge. And then that way, if you've got, what is it, twelve plus ten, if you got if you got uh twelve in uh the owner's spots and ten in building B, um, so you've got twenty two.
They got, they got, they're talking about twenty two inside and then seven outside.
Right, so you have more than twenty two people that are renting that have EVs. Those people are gonna kind of have to rotate around in the surface spots, but they can't be permanent.
Or quite honestly, what the owner will end up doing.
Will end up installing more.
They're gonna end up adding more EVs, and what's gonna happen is that this, you know, we're thinking long term here, and I think everyone would agree that the owner will end up having to make all of these interior spots EV ready at a minimum at some point down the road, so.
Absolutely. No doubt, but I think a simple solution is just to be, you 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 limit the 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 public surface EV spots to two hours, and that way.
None of them are public.
I'm sorry, not public visitor per, yeah, not assigned, sorry, not assigned surface spots.
All outside spots.
But on but on property. Um, to two hours, and that way, even if a person who has a, you know, a tenant who has a car needs to get their car charged, they've got a spot to charge it, and then they move it into their assigned spot.
I'm not sure if I wanna make that a condition of our.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying it's, I don't think it's that big of a concern, yeah. So I just wanna kind of lay that out there, I think Hannah's comment about whether it's a, you know, class two or class three, if it's class three, it's gonna, it charges very quickly, it 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 doesn't matter, it'll work its way, it'll work its way out. Um, let's see, the maintenance gate, the civil, someone here is not here anymore, oh, there you are, sorry, sorry, I didn't see that. Um, I also don't necessarily, I didn't disagree with Bob that that you may lose parking on that one. I think that you can have an accessible maintenance gate on building B to accept, to be able to access that stormwater area in order to clean it out and maintain it, what, I mean, twice a year, you have to do that? I have no idea.
Best of the system.
Right, um, but if if, again, something that you'd be managing with your tenants, that if you have two or three spots that you need to have a, you know, just like a landlord has to come in to fix plumbing.
Change the workflows.
Exactly, I I think that you don't necessarily have to lose spots, in fact, I encourage you not to propose that, um, but having some sort of maintenance gate on the other side of the.
Cause if they if they if they take out too many spots, they're gonna have a parking problem, they're gonna have to come back here.
Exactly, and I don't wanna see that happen, so I'm encouraging you to create some sort of maintenance gate, make sure it's accessible, have that to deal with your tenants, and don't get rid of any parking underneath there. Um, but again, I think that's a really simple solution. Um, the the issue with the with the um the issue where Tony and I were discussing the heights of the architectural elements, a simple site section would have really helped that, all you needed to do was do it. And you would, I think that issue of the different elevations where Hope Well's higher and just in the future, that would probably have helped. Finally, those exit doors, I don't care if it's a exit stair, a fire exit, I don't care if it's a vestibule, I don't care if it's an ADA, officially ADA accessible. You you need to have at least, I would prefer to see three, but at least two feet clearance on the sidewalk where you're going around the door, it you either need to set in the doors or uh adjust the um sidewalk somehow to accommodate that. You you know, people are gonna be using those fire doors to exit just as much as the the main entrance, I just really wanna make sure that that that's a very user-friendly area, and Bob and Jerry and all the guys out there on the construction site, I just going forward, it's not gonna, not dealing with, it's a tight site, so let's make sure it works. Does that make sense?
Does.
Alright, that's it.
You're good.
You know, Jeff, there was one other thing I was looking back through my notes, I think this applicant was looking for guidance on the hours for the gym on the corner.
Okay, awesome.
I had I had a note in here.
So so again, my my opinion, so it's a it's a gym, I mean, some gyms are open twenty four seven, some are, some people have parties.
I think the concern was these are the outdoor spaces.
Uh, but again, if you're talking about an outdoor space that somebody's gonna go and 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 revive themselves and breathe in fresh air, I I can't imagine saying you're not allowed out on the patio, but your neighbor is allowed out on their patio.
No, but the concern is not, the concern I think was not that somebody's gonna stand out there and breathe, it was more of you're gonna run a sunrise boot camp loud, you know, kind of core class at five fifteen uh when the neighbors are trying to sleep, I think that was that.
Would you be the.
Twenty four hour passive use, all passive, overnight passive use, yeah.
But I think there was testimony that, and this is from recollection, I find in my notes, but I think there's testimony that they weren't planning like a seating area outside, so.
They weren't. They weren't. Not a seating area, no furniture.
No furniture.
No furniture, so.
Which I disagreed with, I wanna see it be a vibrant corner.
But that's what they proposed.
But I guess I looked at it as as a friendly neighbor, I I can't go out and have yoga classes on my patio at five AM because there's a noise ordinance, so.
Well, I mean, that's, so so is, do we need to consider the question is, do we need somewhere in their hours of operation, or is it adequate for normal borough ordinances for lack for sound?
By way of normal.
Yeah.
Just the old ones, yeah. And it doesn't also have to be there.
Somebody regulate, you know, it's just like that.
Well, they they.
We got, we got, we got two people wanna jump in.
Would have addressed, that should have been addressed before we got to this point, so that these conversations would have been settled by a redevelopment agreement approved by council.
Okay, Hannah, go ahead.
Well, I don't think there's even lighting out there. That's also.
There is, actually.
There is lighting, okay, I couldn't remember, I didn't have that in my notes, cause that was my other thing, is that if there's not even lighting out there, then there's no way, I mean.
Yeah. So is the discussion whether it should be twenty four hours?
No.
Well, no, 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 no.
He was just asking.
Wouldn't be actual discussion here.
Should we be regulating from a land use perspective, the hours of operation of a private business? And I say no.
Yeah.
Alright. Outside of like normal borough ordinances that apply to it.
Yeah, I wanna be clear, this is not a separate business that might be subject to the borough's hour of operations, I think, just to put a little separate twist or a little bit more in detail, I think the question is, does the borough wanna regulate the hours of operation for a residential amenity space in the building, that's one. That can be yes or no. The another way to think about it is, do you wanna regulate activities that take place in an outdoor patio area on this building?
It's like somebody telling me what I can and can't do on my front porch.
If they if they, again, to the mayor's plan, that's part of the redevelopment agreement.
But you know, like, are they established, but are they establishing it as a as a public space, or is it a business space?
It's not a business, it's an amenity for residential complex, which it's, and so it's not like it's Planet Fitness.
Right, okay, cause it's not, yeah.
Right, it's it's nor is it Susan's porch, right, because it's it's an amenity to a multifamily residential, so we do have slightly more input per se than say, what do you do on your own front porch? But it's not, doesn't fall under the jurisdiction of a business.
I just see them as equal neighbors to me, so that's my, how my thought process is going.
Yeah, but but if but if you were doing, you know, bootcamp yoga on your front porch at five in the morning, the borough police would be showing up.
Probably.
There's just no getting around that, one of your neighbors would call the police. Police would show up, it would be, you know, a violation of the borough noise ordinance, which, you know, regulates noise between ten PM and seven AM.
Right, so so then we don't need to make, so we don't need to do it here, it'll fall under.
It'll be, it'll need to be addressed in the redevelopment agreement.
It gets addressed in the redevelopment agreement, and it'll be subject to borough ordinance, so this has to necessarily be here, that's fine, that's fine, okay. Um, so we're, I'm gonna go down the horn here, so Brian. Anything else you wanna throw in to the mix?
No.
You're good?
I'm good.
Tony, do you have anything?
No, I I actually think I'm good.
Trent, do you have anything you wanna throw in?
I'm good.
Hannah, do you wanna throw anything else in?
My only thing was just adding on to the EV stations and that utilizing surveillance and like maybe, I don't know, I was just probably repeating a like a dead horse or whatever the saying is. Um, but like designated, not all of the outdoor spaces as hourly, like Susan was saying, but some of them. Um, and then, yeah, just having surveillance to monitor that a little bit. I'm suggesting, comment, thinking, I don't know.
Jim, do you have anything you wanna throw into the mix? I don't think so. Uh, Mayor, do you have anything else you wanna add?
Um, so I address things, but again, you know, I I I need to again bring up my concerns. There are things that should be in this site plan that were being addressed in the redevelopment agreement. Um, design things, you know, sustainability things within the buildings. We have a neighbor across the street who's gonna be losing a parking spot, because for twenty some thirty years, they've been parking in that little strip along the building. Uh, and you know, and they may come along and and make a claim against this approval, because they may actually have some rights to park there, and I don't know, that's a that's a legal question. And you know, and the there's a lot of things that should have been addressed, that you know, yeah, outside of the redevelopment plan, but included in the redevelopment agreement that are now being, and Susan, you were at that, the you were at the last meeting of the of the of the Yagway Redevelopment Committee for this property when we were working out this redevelopment agreement with some of these issues in here. And that is literally the last time that committee met, because this applicant never sent it back.
Yeah, I I wouldn't even know that, I had no idea.
Yeah, no, there were no more meetings, cause they never sent the redevelopment agreement back.
Okay.
But there was nothing to meet about. And and for that reason, I I I just have concerns that this is going to be approved, and we're going to, and and may, and maybe they're actually handing us a lot of power, I don't know. You know, and this is a a question I'll be having with our redevelopment attorney with our special counsel for redevelopment. You know, they may be actually handing us back a whole lot of power on this, and so that's an issue. I like the plan, I like the design, and I thank you, and I thank um Jose with the architecture, you know, I I really pushed for that kind of industrial to match like the egg auction building over there, and that in that kind of neighborhood, it's it's very different than Broad Street, it's different than Elwood Avenue. It's more industrial, I love the design, I absolutely positively love it, I do think that the tower at the point would have been, uh, you know, if you do the variance there, and again, these are things that should have been addressed before we were sitting here. Um, other than that, I think it's a great pro, I think it's a good project, but I have some real fundamental concerns about the process.
Okay. Can I ask a question, please? So, from your standpoint, I'm hearing, so we've got the, go ahead to start this whole process.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have further conversations about it tomorrow, but I I anticipate being into the redevelopment agreement process. It was started, I don't even remember when, honestly, quite a while ago. Uh, but obviously, you know, uh reading the T L T V's, it seems like from a planning perspective, the project works, and from what I understand, my client needed to make sure of, from a planning perspective of what worked, uh, and before he agreed to the redevelopment agreement, I still don't know that for sure, but that's what I.
Okay, I don't wanna get into weeds on that.
To answer to your question.
No, yeah, I don't, I don't wanna get into weeds on that.
The answer to your question is that, you know, pretty much immediately we will be on.
And so what is, so what is the timeframe, I I guess, I don't wanna keep looking backwards.
Yeah.
Cause you can't do anything but happen before, let's talk about what's gonna happen and moving this forward, right? So with this agreement, what is the process?
Well, so so let's 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 be careful, cause I don't wanna have him give testimony here, so let's, then.
I'm I'm asking for the process.
Yeah, 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 so our our approvals are on the site plan that's in front of us. With any conditions that may go, council waivers, approvals, outside agencies, blah blah blah. Council, independent of the planning board, of any decision that we make, um, has to negotiate a redevelopment agreement with the designated redeveloper, has to, hard stop. So, can, you're gonna do that with council?
Yep.
When that happens is up to the mayor and council, and the applicant doing what they gotta do. So those are legally separate processes, and the planning board has absolutely nothing to, by statute, we we're we're, we can't, we're not part of those negotiations, so it's it's between the borough and 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 the designated redeveloper, so.
Let me add something to that, though, because I can hear the mayor's frustration, I really feel bad, because it's clear that she's frustrated with the lack of communication allegedly, and and I really, I really feel badly about that. I think one of the things that should be noted, um, and the mayor already knows this, but I'm kinda saying this at the benefit of our new councilman, is that um, there are items within the redevelopment plan that eventually reflect into the agreement that are planning based, um, or at least have some sort of that are that are generally discussed on this committee, such as the sustainability element, which I helped write, so it, you know, we as a planning board, um, I shouldn't say that, the members of the committee, the the mayor can certainly call upon us to still be involved if she needs us to, like, we're at her disposal if she needs us to, you know, so I just wanna make that clear to you, Mayor, because I I feel like I feel like.
Yeah, but we gotta be careful.
I I just don't wanna help.
Never, there was, there was no reason to call a meeting, cause they never sent the redevelopment.
You gotta stop talking about.
And you know, the thing is, is that redevelopment agreement also includes timelines and milestones to me. I don't think this co, this this planning board should be considering this, and I had this conversation with Cara as to whether or not. But, you know.
Cara sounded like we have to stop talking about this, someone will.
Okay, but you know, but there's milestones in there that they have to meet, and.
And and to that end, to that end, and everything else the mayor's saying and Susan's saying, and and there will be a condition in this approval, if it gets to that point, that there has to be an executed redevelopment agreement between the borough and between the applicant. If that happens, that item is checked off, resolution compliance is there, and they can continue. If it doesn't happen, yes, there was time that was wasted, there was time that, you know, could maybe could have been better spent, but that is a risk that the applicant has chosen to take.
Right.
And without the plan requiring a redevelopment agreement to be in place before they come before this board, this is course of action that we have.
So I wanna I wanna I wanna move this forward, so Jim, do you have anything you wanna add in, Jim?
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna reserve the chair's last prerogative here, but um, cause a lot of it's sort of been talked about, but I I wanted to, just just a few things that I wanted to hit on here, um, um. Put the EVs inside, I think we all agreed to this, okay, fine, alright, um. Make sure that everything is kosher with stormwater and D E P and floodplain. This is, this site is substantially important. We realigned borough roads, we spent de- over a decade on getting that culvert done. There is huge flooding, huge flooding at this at that intersection in the la- in the last several years. The stormwater stuff, the floodplain management, and the stuff with D E P is not trivial. And it may very well necessitate you coming back from amendments, um, be ready for that, because we're not. Cause we're gonna, I wanna make sure that 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 we are very clear in the conditions of approval, that that stuff is critical. We've got huge flooding problems in town, and the infrastructure underneath the 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 site here is. A critical piece of stormwater management in town, and one that has been overwhelmed. Of in recent years, and so we wanna be very clear that as we're talking about climate change, as we're talking about more severe weather events, as we're talking about more flooding in town. There there will be problems, and we wanna make sure that 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 we that you take that seriously, um, and. And so I wanna be very clear that any conditions that we put onto this are are very explicit with the stuff that Bob laid out in terms of stormwater and and D E P approvals. I I I can't emphasize that enough, uh, given given the 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 site here. That was that was a that was a huge thing that I I just wanted to 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 make sure, um, as a as a planner, um, you know. I'm I'm all good with the planning piece, you know, like the the I have no problems, you know. Clearly, is the 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 proofs for the C variants, I I, you know, I think have been met, we've certainly talked about the benefit, we've talked about performance with. Not only redevelopment plan, but also planning documents, and certainly the design relief seat. Being sought is of the minimalist nature, and is also certainly consistent with goals and objectives, so. So I have no, just putting this out there on the record, I have no objection to um, to granting the relief that's that's being requested. Uh, for 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 that stuff. The the and the last thing that is is that I that I just wanna say is, uh, I'd like for us, if it's okay, to. To not vote tonight, we have some some language that needs to get worked on. Um, it sounds like Karen needs some time, and we need we need to work on the E V stuff, we need to work on some other stuff, I'd like for us. To carry this to for next meeting for what will hopefully be. A vote, um, well, someone would have to make a motion, but we'd have to have a vote, um, with conditions in front of us. Um, and and then that would be like, I think the only thing. That we would need to, you know, left to do on this, right?
I'd like to get to make a suggestion that we get an extension of time for a little longer than that for the Board of Act, so that.
Okay.
Can work out some of these language issues and.
Uh, in front of you, what what Wednesday?
Did we push until the end, Jim?
Uh, June fourteenth is the next meeting that you.
Oh, June fourteenth is the next one, but I thought that.
No, but time to act, I thought we'd get. I didn't remember any extended time to act, I just don't remember what it was.
I don't, call it off the top of my head.
Why don't we say July thirty first? Just.
Yeah, it might be June thirtieth, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think it might be June thirtieth.
I thought I remember seeing June thirtieth, so.
I think so.
Yeah, I would say at least July thirty first, even if we go through to.
Can we? Yeah.
The August ninth meeting of the board.
Would that be?
Just to be safe.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we can get that in email or writing later.
So.
Yeah, time to act extended to August ninth, but.
To August ninth.
Yeah, um, but, um. Because there's gonna be some language here, and and the question is, we will carry this to the next meeting, cause it's about two weeks. Um, if we feel like we're not there with conditions and language, we would just carry it to the subsequent.
Yeah, and and you know, from my perspective, I I knew there was some level of concern on the mayor's part, but this is the first that I'm hearing. The the heightened level of concern that the mayor has, so I would just like to reiterate that we have already deserved their rights to. Reopen our portion, uh, so that hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we can get some clarity in whether there's anything. That, uh, we can change or amend, um, in order to.
I think your issues are not on the site plan side, I think your issues are dealing with council and mayor on the agreement.
Right.
I think that needs, and I'm not saying anything more than that, just.
That's fine, exactly what I'm saying, is that if there's anything, hopefully we can make progress in the next couple of weeks, if there's anything on the planning side in that agreement. We can bring it to your attention and reopen our.
Sure, sure. That that and that's fair, that's fair, continue to do that, absolutely. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna say we're gonna continue this then, right? Because probably don't need to vote or anything, so, um, we are going to continue this matter. To our next meeting, June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, seven P M in this room, no further notice will be given. And everyone's got their homework to do, right? All right.
Yep.
All right, thank you, we are up to item eight on our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Trump.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
All right, we are up to item eight, which is chair items. Which, uh, we just continued this, hopefully we'll be getting ready to take the next steps there, if not, we'll 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 do what we gotta do. Um, we did, um, we were. Here, but I kinda heard, um.
We all have taken that.
We are, we are, no, it's okay, we I can I can say this is the agenda, um, we are, um, scheduling the public hearing for. Family Promise, um, that's that's been, uh, Mr. Roberts, anyone who noticed for the fourteenth, so. So I think that maybe if you wanna communicate with Mr. Roberts that is.
Yeah.
It's likely that he's gonna.
Yeah, likely.
He might very likely be able to be heard, at least in the good part, because of where we are with everything.
Well.
Um, and when I say we, I mean you, um, so. So that's that, um, other things I wanna just put out there for folks under chair items. I, um, I got an email, um. For the list that I forwarded along, um, the F C P is working with Go Hundred in to do walk audits. For the south side, whatever that means, um, uh. And Todd already said put it down for both of them, um, I will, I wanna encourage, I actually have done walk audits. With with my grad students and 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 it's it's actually, um, it's an interesting way to. Systematically observe and document what's going on, um, from a pedestrian safety, uh, vantage and, uh.
Oh, that's a good.
Yes, see what it was. No, it's not, okay, so stand standing in intersection with a clipboard. Um, count the number of pedestrians, bicyclists, vehicles, note conditions of the crosswalk and speed and lights and timing and. Oh, there's there's a list, there's a, there's a protocol that you use if you're doing, I'm assuming Go Hundred is using kind of the standard one that everyone else uses. Um, and the the great part of what about walk walk audits is you get, you can get a lot of volunteers trained up very quickly to do it. It requires very little skill, it's a great thing to send interns, I know, i- it's a, um.
Yeah, I did the census in in high school, so I remember that.
It's it's hard, it's easier than the census, so I if if folks, i- it's it's not a bad way to do like. Planning one-on-one work, if you wanna get your feet, uh, on the street, if you could, if you're available, they are during daytime.
So the only thing is, Jeff, I'm just looking at Robbins, no, not only is it, uh, the planning like like to it, it's also bringing art. Signage, attraction, and history to our street, so it's not exactly just an audit of of timing.
Well, you know, what you're what you're gonna document is the is do those elements exist, that's all.
Exist, right.
Right, you're not physically bringing. You're not you're not bringing the.
No, 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 but but I I think it's a little bit more, it 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 had a little bit more of a creative slam.
It does have a lot more creative slam.
On how we're going to recommend, so the F C P got an enormous brand.
Yes.
So to be able to do this. Yes, but.
It's June to to not, no, June fourteenth and sixteenth.
It's fourteenth and sixteenth, which I will say, which is my second chair item, um, that is the, um, New Jersey State Planning Conference, the fourteenth and fifteenth is virtual and the sixteenth is a person. I think it's like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday is virtual and sixteenth is in person or something, they they try and do this hybrid thing, so, um. I will be. At some or all of that, I know Beth's already involved with that, I I'm not presenting, but I I will be there. Probably with my Temple University hat on, but I'm, so I'm out for the audit stuff, I need I need C N credits, so.
So are you, I'm gonna be chairing the meeting on the fourteenth?
No, I'll chair the meeting on the fourteenth, I just I just during the day, I can't go do a walk audit, that's all.
Got it.
That's why I haven't encouraged Robin to consider rescheduling that.
What, that seems all right.
Accessible to residents and working people, like most, like all of council works.
Right.
So it's not accessible, the walkout, it's not an accessible time for most of council.
So if you wanna change it, that's fine, I mean, together to change it, be fine, so let us know.
I will.
Yeah.
Now, I'm sorry, will Beth be here at the next meeting?
I'll be here at the meeting, okay, um, planning conference is only during the day.
Got it, and and we're virtual on that day, I get it now.
I won't be here on the fourth. Okay, that's.
So anybody that does want to R S V, do the the walkthrough, whether it gets cha- the date gets changed or not. Respond directly to Robin, that's what the email said to do, so even if it gets changed, respond to her, it's like he knows that you're interested.
Right. Yeah, go to Robin. That's your interest, right, exactly, so that's that, um. Um, another thing, let's see, what did we get, um, there were some correspondents. Kerbal Sheriff, um, or Sharif, I forgot how to pronounce it, oh, last one passed, yes. Um, so there, the about, um, that's, what is that, that's fifty something East Main Street.
Fifty-four?
Fifty-four East Main Street, um, so there might be a new owner, there might be something there with.
Right. What was that?
Oh, that's the yellow house with all the E V stuff, yes.
Way of the end, yeah, oh, way of the end.
Yeah. Wow.
You you know exactly the line that I'm talking about, yeah, okay.
I think we've gone to two different site plans.
Yeah, so.
They 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 need to, um, submit some escrow, so that Cara can do some research on some of the questions they they have asked, some legal questions.
I just think I was.
And they agreed to that, so.
You should, so so all I'm saying is that this thing may show up again, uh, because they're asking questions about what. Approvals carried with the title and what didn't, but until they close escrow, we're not looking, doing any research, so.
And they agreed, so.
I think, right, so it'll it'll.
They're they're all.
I'm just putting it out there, it's something that's out there, um, and we also have. Uh, um, we've gotten a couple of emails from Skylar Bird about, you know, filling station site and wants to move forward with that. Um, I they're they're at the custom submitting an application.
Yes, he thought it was gonna be some done this this week.
Yeah, so that's gonna come before us, um, we have, um, there will be a.
Thirty-seven mine.
Yeah, thirty-seven mine is ha- had at least had the technical review, they're probably submitting sooner than later, uh, we also will probably get.
They had, they they scheduled some soil test with Bob's office, so they still wanna do that before they submit it out.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, and you know, do the design.
Okay, so so thirty-seven mine is is moving forward, the other one that will likely move forward since they closed the restaurant is the Country Grill site. Um, but they've talked to Jeff weeks ago, Country Grill closed.
Yeah.
Twenty-two?
Yeah.
That's way.
For that. You gotta come to meetings to get the to get the tea, um. No, so they're they're gonna, the what the the contract purchaser talked to Jeff Klein several weeks ago. Uh, their their idea is to put in, and this has been reported in the papers, I'm not saying anything out of turn, uh. A an urgent care and dental clinic splitting the site, they, Jeff encouraged them to come in for an informal to talk to us.
Yeah.
Um, but that hasn't happened yet.
I will reach out to them again.
You could, yeah.
And see if they can, you know, get on an agenda for an informal.
So.
Just make sure it's like we usually do, that it's allowed and it's not.
I I think you and Jeff have both reviewed the the uses that they want and or and and other items.
We. We. The uses. Yeah. It doesn't appear to be.
Doesn't appear to be.
A use question, it appears to be, um, some interpretation about site. Stuff that an informal would probably get them fifty yards down the field before, you know, that help them get to fill it. Uh, so that's that's out there, again, I'm just saying that these are applications that we know, but we don't.
And we, I also that the union hotel for.
Court.
And courthouse where has got an amendment coming through.
Have it has an amendment, they are going to amend it and compliance at the same time, um.
They were trying to get compliance out of the way before they came in for that.
Right.
But that's, we don't have a date yet on that.
No, but I know that they had checks written, so I think it, I mean, that's usually an indication that it's pretty close.
Okay.
It's substantially the eating areas.
It's the porch.
Yeah.
The plaza, the plaza thing over in.
Right.
As far as we know.
As far as we know, yes, right.
Oh, infant.
From weeds on us, um, Beth, where do we have a master plan?
We're a little delayed, and I'm sorry about that, um, so what I've been working on, and I am a little bit at this point, is. Sort of like this existing divisions analysis that's get that is gonna be the basis, the the foundation for the land use element, as well as the economic development element. So that's just about complete at this point, my plan is to send this up to the subcommittee, uh, use that as a basis for. Well, one, for meeting discussion, to find out folks thoughts, additional information, questions, etcetera, but also to use that as a springboard for. Identifying recommendations and also using that as a springboard also for the public participation. That will be, uh, the public participation program that'll be designed for the master plan, so once we have this information, we'll better be able to. Up that receive comments, weigh comments, and have a census to have the master.
And part of the existing divisions, you've got everything you need from the prior grant funded work?
Yeah.
You have all the final reports from everything?
Oh, yeah, yeah, from the sand sand check report, etcetera, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, just making sure, um, all right, um.
Yeah.
That's what I had under chair items, anybody have anything else, yes, this is.
Yeah, um, we got an email about an E V ordinance writing seminar on June twenty-eighth. It was basically just to save the date, in fact, they didn't even send out, hey, click here to register yet, um, it's on June twenty-eighth.
Who's running it?
Um, I, well, I took a, da-da-da.
You go hard.
Um, save the day, Go Hundred in and Hundred in County Department of Planning and Land Use invite you to mark your calendars for an ordinance. Writing workshop for municipal representatives on Tuesday, June twenty-eighth, um, so. I know that I'm not available that day, and it specifically, I, it specifically says that, you know, who is this good for, and of course. We, one of us, at least one of us needs to.
Well, I was gonna say, so Tony, you're you're.
So we need to make sure somebody goes.
Tony is our planning, is our council meeting, so I'm not saying you should be there, but I'm saying if you could bring it back to council, because council does ordinances.
Yeah.
That would.
But I definitely want somebody from the planning board there.
It's June twenty.
June twenty-eighth.
It's right at the time.
I will, I will, um, this is a, this is a, just a screenshot of it, but I will, I will forward it to you, Tony.
We.
Um, the point is, we need to make sure somebody's on there, so at the next meeting, let's decide at least one planning board member going to that. And certainly one council member going to that, if it's the same, you know, both planning, again, that's fine too, but I thought the.
It's it's funny, if it's if it's a daytime thing, it's a fun part for the council.
Exactly, it it looks like it's a breakfast, uh.
It says it says via Zoom.
Yeah, I I think it also can be via Zoom, but that means that I still, I have to, you know, Zoom in from Yosemite, you can't do that.
Oh, via Zoom.
Virtual breakfast, I don't think it's actually, I don't think it's in person, all right.
We'll figure it out.
All right, thank you, anything else with the chair items, anything, anybody have anything else?
Yeah, so I just wanna jump in, and I've shared this with Cara, and she shared it back, it was a week and a half ago. There's some legislation moving through the, uh, Assembly, State Assembly and Senate that would. Cara, do you wanna bring this up about, uh, development by right of, um. And I don't know how much we're impacted by it in Flemington, but I think that this board needs to be aware that this is happening, and I don't think it's a good thing. Where they would make, um. Cara Cara, can you just give the thought, the two-minute explainer as to this, cause we've had these conversations, but you'll explain it better than I can.
Yeah, and you know, Bird's eye view of what the legislation currently is proposing in its current form is, it would, it would take. Um, I guess antiquated, um, trying to think of exactly what it was, I it it would allow them to be revitalized for mixed use, but.
Miles and office conflict.
Say it again?
There's malls and office conflict.
Yeah, malls, office buildings.
You have some spend on.
That were underutilized, they had to satisfy a certain number of criteria with regard to size, they had to utilize the existing buildings. There's a lot of different criteria that would have to be satisfied, but if that did happen, then as of right, that property could be redeveloped. You know, not using the typical redevelopment term, but developed for, uh, mixed use, uh, development, yeah.
Without.
So we kind of should, without change, basically trumping the ability of municipalities to zone. Those areas provided that it satisfied the criteria that was in the legislation.
So there's sort of.
So it's.
Yes, correct, correct.
So they still need site plan approval, um, but.
But they'd use, would need a use variance.
Correct, and the way that the legislation is worded is it has these very tight.
Mm-hmm, very.
Very tight controls about the floor area and using the existing building, and so. On one hand, it's sort of a slap in the face to municipal zoning power.
Mm-hmm.
On the other hand, I'm quite honestly, I'm not sure exactly what they think they're gonna achieve, because I can't remember the last time I saw a multifamily building. That was just put on top of an existing strip mall or in the same, yeah, so I feel like it's very symbolic. And poorly drafted, but still dangerous and concerning for municipalities, but.
Yes. Well, and 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 what I kinda looked at too is there's a trend, and I don't know what you think about this, and we're kinda getting over.
It's all chair items, it's okay.
Yeah, but you know, we have E Vs that are now required everywhere, and and it's permitted uses for accessory uses, and now we've got this, I mean, so there.
Yeah.
Really seems to be a.
Okay, so so so, but philosophically, all police power of planning emanates from the. Okay, so 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 but philosophically, all police power of planning emanates from the states and not the municipalities anyway. So this is a big, Pines has rules and the Highlands has rules and.
Pines.
The state, you know, Meadowlands has rules that are superseding local zoning because the state has those powers.
What was it?
Over like a true fan or a big.
No, but there are.
No, I hear what you're saying, but this feels a little closer to home.
No, no, I hear you.
But there are malls, like there, I mean, right, that's my business, right? So there are malls that have turned into churches.
Yeah.
Literally, like five hundred thousand square foot churches. And there used to be a shopping mall and these folks come in. So there are things that are that are quite strange out there when I go to visit old malls that aren't there anymore. And and again, the church thing, and not that that we wouldn't want a church to come in, but it was just strange that they'd see a church come in into an old. JCPenney's, for example. So now this is sort of looking at that and saying, well, now maybe you can look at it and say. Make it a mixed use or something, because I gotta tell you, these malls, look at Denver, the the mall around the the airport. It's completely different now.
Yeah.
Because the airport moved, so.
I think the state's trying to do a good thing. They see that we have these problems in our retail and our office market. It's.
Yes.
It's real, it's visual when you just drive down the highway. And for me. You know, I appreciate the effort that they want to help revitalize the areas, but I I feel like they're just missing the mark by.
Yeah.
By eliminating municipal power.
The office concern, the office, the office point is probably more concerned than than the dead malls because.
Yeah.
Because there is, there is probably a lot of empty office space in parts of local towns where there may not be infrastructure for residential. There may not be school capacity for infrastructure where a town may have, may. Have zoned it in such a way to deal with build out and so I feel a concern.
And I think the mall problem was, I should, I should quote myself, there were five hundred thousand square foot churches. That'd be really big. More than I got, five thousand square foot church, but um um which would be small. But I think the mall thing sort of caught everybody by surprise, how it was sort of dotting the landscape of what do you do with all this real estate? So.
But there, I've seen some very creative uses with old malls too, that I've seen that in 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 case studies, you know, all over the country.
Right.
That doesn't necessarily apply.
But you know what? But those, those interesting case studies, they would never comply with this new legislature. Really, but yeah, there's no way.
It's all local. Yes. Interesting.
All right, let's move on. Uh thank you all for that. Uh anything else? Right, we're good. All right, so Bill's gonna get a motion out of the bills.
Uh I'll move and start.
Go second.
Mrs. Zinghart?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Doshna?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Ms. Whiteson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
All right, professional reports. Uh anything, Kara?
Nope.
Oh.
No.
Beth?
No.
Did we lose our transportation plan or we did? But it's okay, because we'll assume it's a no. Do we need to go to executive session for any purpose? All right, can I get a motion adjourned?
I'll move.
Jim, Jim got you.
Second.
Oh, favor, I. Thank you.
Hi.
All right.